All the meeting of the program of personnel together. This is a committee meeting first, followed by FNF, and then the general meeting to follow. And we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Or do you want to wait until the general?
Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the two flag of the United States of America. To the public, where we stand, where we wish individuals of liberty and justice for all.
Everyone returns to their seats. Don Carmichael.
Okay, just a quick review of the agenda. Start with public comment. For discussion tonight, we'll be looking at board policies, employment employees, educational tours, the Illinois Report Card update. The update from Explore Multiple Pathways Strategic Goal. Discuss any future agenda items and then turn it over to FNF after adjournment. So let's start now with an invitation for public comment. And I understand that we have a public comment. Would you rather go at FNF or would you rather very well? Okay. If there's anyone else for a public comment?
Pause for the public.
And seeing none, moving on for discussion, board policies. This will largely be run by Bryant. I would like to say that the
Momentary pause.
The committee met for a few times to update all of our board policies. So you'll notice that the first reading was all 334 pages, the entire document. So what we'll be doing tonight, in essence, is after we vote next month, because this is the first reading, we'll vote next month to adopt the policies. They will all have a 2023 date or 2024 date. So it's a bit daunting because you're looking at everything all at once. But having gone through them, you can see there were just tons of tiny little changes here and there. So that took a great deal of work and Bryant and Carol did almost all of that work. There was press. We hired press to help us do this so that they will continue to keep us up to date. And it will take a great deal of work off of the shoulders of our district personnel. So I would like to thank Bryant and Carol in particular for all the work that they did in committee. And I'll turn it over to you.
Bryant Kelly.
I was gonna say thank you to Don for being a part of our committee and working on, you know, updating the policy stuff. So we were with IASB, so Illinois Association of School Boards Press, and we're transitioning to IASB Press Plus, which gives us, it's much easier for us on the backside, for Carol and I, doing some of the updates and to see the updates. And I think get some of those updates to you in a more timely manner also. So just I did outline, and it's on the the public side of it also, just the outline of what has occurred over the past, you know, since basically beginning of the summer, where we, you know, met with our policy committee and part of the process of ensuring that our current policies and the policies that we wanted to update align with what we're actually doing at District 128 and at Libertyville, Vernon Hills in transition. So ensuring that our procedures, ensuring that this is a 9th through 12th grade district, you know, they were not putting in policies for a elementary school. And so she did a lot of, you know, work of asking us a lot of questions. But Tammy also did a lot of work of looking at our website, looking at our procedures and knowing what we were doing, looking at our current policies. So that was really helpful. So that, you know, is part of the process that we worked with with IASB. So then from basically June through September, we started going through the drafts, going through the different sections, you know, with Tammy. So we had a couple of meetings where we met. In September 12th, we had our policy committee meeting where we reviewed Sections 1 through 6, going through basically policy by policy, what was different from ours and what the recommendation from press. There were some updates that we have not done over the years because press hasn't made any reviews or updates, style changes. And so we were a little behind. So if those were done pre me, when I was in this position, then, you know, we did bring those up to date. IASB Press also still uses he or she, so we had to go back through. And we had, I think a couple of years ago, adopted that we were going to use they throughout all of our policies. So we had to go through all of that. And I think Carol did a great job of going through that. But if we do find changes along the way that it's still the old language, we'll have to go back and and update those. Then we met again in October and reviewed the final couple of sections and then reviewed Sections 1 through 6 again. And then we received these at the beginning of November. We weren't ready to bring them to the November PMP and Board Meeting because I wanted to be able to share some of the notes that I shared on there and then bring it for a first reading today. And obviously, December is a little bit different with both meetings tonight. So it's a first reading at this meeting, a first reading at the Board Meeting, and then we'll bring it to a second reading at PMP in January, and then a second reading at the Board Meeting for full adoption in January. And then I think there's some updates coming right after that from press.
Fortunately, will be done automatically.
Yeah, so we'll, you know, and we'll have to go through the two-step process, but it'll be much easier in our system. But yes, there are more updates coming, so. Are there any questions?
Pause for discussion and questions.
It seemed like an overwhelming task.
At times it was. So thank you to Carol for doing a lot of stuff.
Don Carmichael.
Okay, if there aren't any further questions, we'll move on to employment of employees. Again, to Bryant.
Bryant Kelly.
Employment employees, we have just a couple of changes with our educational support staff and coaching extracurricular staff. And again, this is our recommendation to be put out consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Don Carmichael.
Moving on to educational tours.
Bryant Kelly.
Educational tours, there are six educational tours there with all of the information, itineraries and budget. Were there any questions on any of the tours that were attached?
Pause for questions. Dr. Denise Herman.
Wasn't there one correction?
Yeah, there was one correction. If depending on what time, we corrected about probably 1:30 today. The Vernon Hills Fine Arts to Peoria in January, the budget sheet was incorrect, but we fixed that. So it's updated now in there. So if you go in and click on the PDF there for the Vernon Hills Fine Arts Board, you'll see that that was updated. Thank you.
I didn't see that. Was there a substantial change? Is that me?
It was linking to the wrong budget sheet and wrong, had the wrong amounts in there. So we fixed that. Thank you, Lisa, for pointing that out.
And now the item D, Illinois Report Card Proficiency Rates Equity Journey Continuum.
Charlotte Deems approaches podium.
Thank you, Charlotte, for waiting until tonight to do this and putting it off.
Yes, no, that was, it was a good decision. Glad to, glad to be back. So good evening. I am reporting tonight. This is the second of a two-part series on the report card. And yes, the, this was originally scheduled for about a month ago and and we postponed it till tonight. So thank you for having me back to talk about the next portions of the report card. So we'll be looking at proficiency rates and at our equity journey continuum.
Pause for slide.
So the, this is just a reminder. We saw these slides in my first presentation a little over a month ago. Just a reminder for anyone who didn't see that or who may have forgotten since then. Our report cards were published on October 30th. All Illinois report cards can be found at illinoisreportcard.com. And on this page, you can search for any school or district in the state. Report cards are created at both the school and district level. For, for some areas of the report cards, the information is is similar. But there are certain things that you'll only see on a district report card. For instance, the Equity Journey Continuum is something that is prepared for districts. So we don't have that as an individual school level, but we have one for the district. There are certain things that we only see for schools. So an example of that would be the summative designations are only presented for each school. So slight differences, but all districts and all schools have a report card.
Pause for slide.
So upon entering into a school or district report card, you'll come to a landing page, which gives a snapshot of that school or district. You'll see a few important highlights on those pages. So on this slide, you're just seeing images of what it will look like when you enter into either the district report card that is shown on the far left with more of the light green colors. And then in the middle and the far right are what a school report card will look like right when you get into the site, and that is shown with more yellow colors. And that color scheme is consistent throughout looking at report cards. So district level items are in that lighter green, school level items are in yellow. And then we also are able to compare to the state level, which is shown in dark green. So that's a consistent thing that happens throughout looking at various report cards.
Pause for slide.
So this is just a reminder of report card presentation number one, which was given on November 6th. This focused on our summative designations, which are determined by the indicators shown in the pie chart here. And then we took a deep dive into the two indicators that make up the largest portion of our summative designation scores, our graduation rate and our chronic absenteeism. So that's what we did previously.
Pause for slide.
And tonight, we will be looking at our proficiency rates in ELA, math and science. And then we'll also be looking at our Equity Journey Continuum. The Equity Journey Continuum is not part of the summative designation scoring, but it is a really important part of our district level report card. So we want to definitely take a look, a deeper dive into that. So we'll start with proficiency rates. Proficiency rates give us the percentage of 11th grade students who meet proficiency on the state's ELA, math and science assessments taken in the spring of their junior year. Combined, these proficiency rates account for 20% of the summative designation score. And both LHS and VHHS earned the maximum number of points toward their summative designation scores in all three proficiency categories for this current report card. On the following slides, we'll be looking at various proficiency levels. This slide explains each of those levels. And you'll see these color coded on the slides to come. So this just gives you an idea of what we're looking at, the various levels of proficiency that the state defines. So levels one and two, the orange and yellow represent scores that are below the benchmark. And the two shades of green, levels three and four, represent scores that have met or exceeded the benchmark.
Pause for slide.
So we'll be looking at each proficiency rate separately. There are four slides per subject area. So we'll see four slides for ELA, then four for math, four for science. And they'll all kind of follow the same format. So you'll see similar graphic representations. So we'll start by looking at our ELA proficiency. All data reported in this presentation is at our district level. We can, of course, break this down by school, but for this presentation, we are looking at it as a district. So in 2023, D128 achieved a 63.8% proficiency in ELA. And what that means is 63.8 of our students met or exceeded the ELA benchmark on their 11th grade spring SAT. This is compared to the state average ELA proficiency of 31.6. In this image, we're also looking at multiple years. So take note of that. This goes back to 2017. And you'll see a little break there in each of those representations. That was a break in 2020. I don't think I have to tell you why, there's no data there. So we can see, looking at the, at this data over time, that we have had a slight decrease in proficiency since our levels pre-COVID. This is true at both the district and the state level. Our district's highest proficiency levels came in 2018 with 75.2 proficiency. So the work we have in front of us now is to get ourselves back to pre-COVID proficiency rates and then to go beyond. And we'll be looking at some of the targets that the state has set for us on the upcoming slides, which will go above and beyond some of the the proficiency levels we've hit in the past. One other thing to note is, so we typically talk about having met benchmarks versus not having met benchmarks. But we also have those four breakdowns. And if we look at that dark orange area, which is what you'll see on the farthest left, we see that that dark orange area has grown a little. And so that's something we really need to focus on because those students are the farthest from, from being at proficient. So we need to be focusing on that area. We want the orange and the yellow areas to be decreasing and the green areas to grow. When we get the actual SAT score reports, the subject areas are broken down further into domains. It doesn't break them down by individual standards, but it is in domain. So that gives us an opportunity to look at where our students are showing strengths and where we have some growth. So our next steps here are to look at that on a building and department level to see if there are areas where we know we can focus to help our students grow.
Pause for slide.
So on this slide, we are looking at annual proficiency targets that the Illinois State Board of Education has released. As you can see from the chart, the goal is that by 2033, all student groups will be at 90% proficiency. And each student group has annual step targets to get to that 90%. Those, those targets change by the grouping until they all meet in 2033 at 90%. So I've highlighted 2023, the current targets. And then as you look down, you see that on the bottom there, everyone has the goal of getting to 90% by 2033. Certain student groups have larger steps to get there based on where they are now. But that is, these are the targets that the state has set.
Sunal Kulcarney.
Hi, I have a question. I don't remember the specific details, but what I do remember from the first report card is the class that's the 11th graders now. Their PSAT scores were lower than their cohorts at the same
Yes.
class. So I'm curious to see when they take the SAT in, in spring. Are we looking, are we hoping that their numbers actually go up? Or we haven't had enough time to help them? Are they going to meet even what was met by this report card? Or are we expecting them to be lower? Just curious where.
Charlotte Deems.
We haven't, we haven't really done any future prediction analysis based on that. It's some, it's something we certainly have, are wanting to track and to keep track of. But I, but I, I don't have any predictions at this point.
Lisa Hessel.
And along the lines, in terms of tracking cohorts, that would be up to us. That, that information doesn't appear anywhere on the Illinois Report Card.
Correct, yes, correct. So yeah, so we did look at that 11th grade cohort. We, we could look at our 12th grade cohort too, but there's some missing data because of the COVID years. So my thought process has been that that is something that we will really start tracking as we start getting more data in future years for the groups we have now to see if that, that is a trend that's occurring or if that was just something that happened with that class with that year. So it's hard to know without having more data points. But that's something that I do plan to track moving forward so that we can, can take note of, is that a pattern? Or was it just something that happened in one moment in time?
Sunal Kulcarney.
I mean, my only reason I'm asking is these targets are, and they should be, going higher.
Yes.
But this class was lower than where the cohorts were. So you're, you're going to end up with a larger gap if nothing changed.
Yes.
So is there something we should do between now and spring to kind of try and close the gap? I guess is the main question I'm asking.
Dr. Denise Herman.
I think we have two new pieces of data that will help us, one being star testing for the first time for all juniors. So in addition to the PSAT data, we have one other data and all students will be taking that again in December here. So we'll have the August, the December, and then hopefully that will be used by individual classroom teachers. That's one thing we can do. Again, we're looking at it right now, district level. And I know both of the assistant principals for teaching and learning have been working with department chairs to say, okay, so what does this global data mean for our juniors in math classes? Who's in Algebra II, who's in Precálculus, who's in some of these classes? To try and do some targeted work for some of the students who we know aren't at proficiency yet. I think we're still building, like I said, the predictive part of the model. But we definitely have more information this year than we have in the past to help teachers get more specific in the ways they can support students prior to the test in April.
So on this slide, we are looking at our 2023 ELA proficiency rates. Those are the green bars. And we're comparing that to the 2023 targets. So looking at this bar chart, we can see that the target was met by all student groups with the exception of our English learner population. That was our one student group that didn't meet the target this year. This is a group that we are placing a lot of focus on, especially as this group has been growing. We have expanded our EL program, hired more EL staff and in order to support a future proficiency for that group.
Pause for slide.
So this slide, there's a lot going on. We are looking at the targets for the various student populations. So each of those colored lines represents a different student group. And you are seeing kind of where their target begins this year to where they're all going to meet in 2033 at 90%. So it kind of gives you an idea of where each group's target steps are going. And then I've plotted on each line the current proficiency levels. So this gives you an idea, if you, if you find one of those proficiency levels and take it down to the bottom of the graph where you see the yearly targets, that gives you an idea, if nothing changes, if, if everything remains the same, this is the moment at which that student group will no longer be meeting the target set by the state. So you see that that's happening at different points for each of our student groups. Gives us an idea of where we need to take these groups to get them to those target levels.
Pause for slide.
So we're going to go through those same four slides for math. So you're going to see very similar information, slightly different numbers. So here we are looking at our math proficiency. D128 achieved a 59.9% proficiency in math in 2023. This is compared to the state average of 26.7. Again, looking at multiple years with the infamous pause in 2020. And we see many of the same patterns that we saw for our ELA data. We see that proficiency has decreased since COVID, that we are not yet back to our pre-COVID levels and that those dark orange pieces of the graph have gotten bigger. So those are really our areas of focus to move students out of the orange and eventually out of the yellow and into the green where they are meeting their benchmarks.
Pause for slide.
And this is a very similar chart. The numbers again are, are different for math, but it's, it's the same goal. Everybody with the goal of 90% proficiency by 2033. So this is the, the different steps for, for math proficiency.
Pause for slide.
And on this slide, again, similar to what we saw with ELA, we're looking at the 2023 math proficiency rates by student group in green as compared to the 2023 math targets in yellow. And in math, similar to ELA, the, the target was met by all groups aside from our English learner population. So again, a, a population that we are highly focused on, trying to provide more resources for them and help them meet proficiency.
Pause for slide.
And here we're seeing the same type of graph again with the various targets all headed toward that 90% proficiency and the place where we are now with each of those groups and where, how far they need to go to get to that 90%.
Pause for slide.
And we're going to do it one more time for science. So the, this is the science proficiency. And this science is presented in a, in a slightly different way. And we also don't have as much historical data. So we are seeing only three years from 2021 to 2023. And we achieved a 77.3% proficiency rate in 2023. This one is a little harder to tell. If we are looking at a trend, we went up in 2022, a little bit down in 2023. And we don't have pre-COVID data on this particular assessment. So this is one we need to watch a little more for in the future to, to see what trends we are looking at. Hard to determine what it is with, without more data. So we'll, we'll obviously be looking at this year after year to see if we are growing.
Pause for slide.
Science has the same target goals as math and ELA. So again, heading toward 90%.
Pause for slide.
And here are again, the 2023 proficiency rates in green and the proficiency targets in yellow. We did meet the target in every student group for science. So something that we can really be proud of this, this year.
Jim Vatson.
Do I recall the science portion was also offered in Spanish? Is the, the reason for the EL achievement?
Charlotte Deems.
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Momentary pause.
But I
I believe it.
will find out.
I believe it may have been. But
That's
you know, it shows that
That would make sense.
It's, it's a, a language barrier, not a intelligence barrier, for lack of a better term. I, I hate to be
Yeah.
I don't want that to come across wrong, but I, it just, you know, it took, to me, this is a, a good news thing here.
Yes, absolutely. And I'll, I'll check on that. Yeah, thank you.
Pause for slide.
And here we are again with our line graph, everybody headed toward the 90%. We have one student group, which is our Asian students who've already reached that target. And then we have other student groups getting close. But we have some, some ways to go to get everybody toward that 90.
Momentary pause.
But that brings us to the end of proficiency rates. Are there any other questions on that part before we move on to Equity Journey Continuum?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Okay.
Pause for slide.
So we'll switch gears here and we will look at our Equity Journey Continuum. Again, this is not part of our school's summative designation scores, but a really important part of our district report card and only reported at the district level. The Equity Journey Continuum was first shown on the 2022 report card. And it's an informational tool for districts to track progress toward closing gaps in student achievement, opportunities and supports. One thing to note is the years represented by the Equity Journey Continuum do not match the report card year. So we saw this for the first time in 2022.
Momentary pause.
But that data was from the 2018-19 school year. And this year's data on the 2023 report card is from the 2021-22 school year. So the years we're looking at do not match the actual report card year, which can be a little confusing. And as we look at the two Equity Journey Continuum next to each other, just important to keep these years in mind because we're actually looking at a three-year span from our first Equity Journey Continuum to our second, even though they were presented only one year apart.
Pause for slide.
This slide just shows the areas that are taken into account on the Equity Journey Continuum. When we see the actual continuum, we'll see three main categories, which are student learning, learning conditions and elevating educators. This shows with the bullets below what goes into those larger categories.
Pause for slide.
And on this slide, we see the connections between the things that go into our Equity Journey Continuum and the commitments that D128 has made to racial equity.
Pause for slide.
So here, we are looking at the Equity Journey Continua from the two years. The light blue bars that are on the top are what is reported on our current report card. So again, that's data from 2021-22. The darker blue bars are what was reported on our 2022 report card. That data was from the 2018-19 school year. So we are seeing in, in, especially in that student learning place, we see that there's a big decrease there. And it's important to again, remember that while that looks very abrupt, there were three years between the, the data that went into these continua. The, the dark blue also represents pre-COVID. the the data that went into these continua. The the dark blue also represents pre-COVID, and many things have changed since then, including our student population, which is becoming more and more diverse. So we do see that dip, and this is actually something we are investigating a little deeper with our partners at the state level, because we we do see that we've decreased quite a bit in that area, and want to make sure we understand why, so that we can make improvements in those places. So Larry Varn, Director of Equity and Inclusion, and I have dug into this data as much as we can from our vantage point, and we are currently working with the state to help us better understand exactly where we missed the mark in the student learning area, and why our score decreased as much as it did. So that is something that is still in progress. We've been working with the state for over a month now to make sure that we get some solid answers. So once we have those answers, I will certainly share that information, because we certainly want to learn from that decrease and and work toward seeing an increase in that area next year.
Pause for slide.
On the next slide, this just breaks down the exact numerical values that that we were scored in in the the lower level categories, and how they add up to the numbers that you saw on the previous screen. So it just gives you an idea, and we are seeing the the scores from 2018-19 school year and then 2021-22 school year. And you can see where where the differences came in that led to the the dip in score. So for the student learning, our biggest dip is in advanced academic programs. And that is something that we're already working very hard on with our partnership with EOS. So so we are aware that that's an area of growth for us already. Again, we're digging into that even deeper with the state to make sure we fully understand how this is measured, and what we need to do to close those gaps, and make sure that we are achieving the equity that we intend.
Pause for slide.
Can I ask a question just so
Yes.
Because I'm I'm not understanding what they mean by large gap, moderate gap, small gap. There's a gap of what is the state is expecting as far as equitable access and what we have? Or is it an achievement gap? What is what is the gap?
So it's so the whole continuum is really based on gaps, based on a comparison of so for they look at numerous things. But for instance, one thing that they look at is our white population as compared to our other racial populations. And they look at, for instance, if it's an achievement piece, they'd be looking at what is the achievement of our white students as compared to the achievement of our other racial groups. And what whatever that gap is, then goes on to this continuum. So they are scoring it on this. Let me go back.
Pause for slide.
They are scoring it on this sort of, it's like a one to 4.5 scale. And there's there's many formulas and things that go into getting those numbers. That's part of what Mr. Varn and I are working with the state to make sure we fully understand where that information came from, so that we can can better answer some questions about why it looks the way it does. But we haven't gotten all of our questions answered quite yet. But
Can I just interject? I think one of the questions you're trying to get an answer to is really an interesting question for the board to understand as it relates to EOS, because that particular one where we went down the most is advanced placement. So there's a very large gap between the percent of students who are white, who are in AP honors, and other student for other
Others, right. So we're looking at all the different subgroups, and we should have some kind of continuity when it comes to percentages and when the gap is. I mean, I that's what the gap is.
But the question that they're trying to answer is, do they count honors in the advanced? Is it just AP? Is it capstone classes? Because we don't send them that data. They know every class our student is enrolled in. So sometimes they do some of this analysis behind the scenes. And it's not a report we generate and send to them that says, here's our data of how many students are in advanced courses. So for we need to know how the state is categorizing that, so we can then understand that better and use that for our own monitoring matrix along the way.
Charlotte Deems.
This is showing the learning conditions. This one has a lot of of elements, so it's on two slides.
Momentary pause.
Stayed pretty steady in the learning conditions category.
Pause for slide.
And then the elevating educators. We actually went up a little in this category, and you can see the elements that went into that as well.
Pause for slide.
Any other questions about the Equity Journey Continuum? We are, as as we've said, still really working to fully, fully understand what goes into the numbers and how the state is obtaining them. So that is a work in progress, something Mr. Varn and I have been attending to for quite some time, and continue to be in contact with the state for further answers. Is there anything else I can answer now?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Yeah, I have one.
Don Carmichael.
The decrease in student learning from 2.91 down to 1.92, that's the one that you're you're focusing on.
Yes.
Do you know whether or not other districts are doing the same work that you are with the state to try and find, is this consistent, excuse me, is this consistent with districts that surround us?
You know, I don't know, because we, the way this is presented, we did look at other districts, and we didn't see a pattern. The we we saw some districts who stayed very steady between their their two years, some who grew, some some who decreased. And I imagine that they have a lot of the same questions we do. I we did not notice a pattern around the area. And it one of the things that the way this is reported publicly, you do have to do a little toggling, because what we are seeing on this slide, that's not that's not the way they present it publicly on the report card. They only present this year. So we can have to, we can go back and look at previous years for other schools and do that, do that comparison. And so we've done a little bit of that. But we we don't see it this pronounced, because they just they're not reporting it stacked the the way they report achievement data. But it is public if we go back to previous report cards. But there had there hasn't been a pattern that we that we've noticed in in the ones that we looked into.
I think one other thing to note is the image you have on the screen now is what's on the report card, but the detailed breakout that you have on the others is not.
Right, correct.
Charlotte did her deep dive to find that data more behind the scenes. So it's also difficult for us to take that deep dive into other schools' data.
Yes, we can only see that categorical number. We don't see those breakdowns for other schools. So if they if they dipped in the same area we did, we don't necessarily know if if it's in the same specific category.
Don Carmichael.
Yeah, it's frustrating that we have a decrease, and we don't, we can't identify a cause.
Jim Vatson.
Yes.
Yeah, I I will say that we're not the only school that has noticed
Right, it's
that substantial of a of a decrease. So my question to them would be, has the formula changed in some way? Not only, you know, how is that formula, you know, how does it work? And what makes up that that number, but also has a change between these two, especially for a new, something new that they're tracking? Chances are, they aren't going to get it right the first time. They aren't not going to get it the way they really expected. So I would expect some adjustments in the formula, but it would be nice to know if they did make an adjustment, so that we can at least explain, oh, well, this is why.
Yes.
Our effectiveness, it really hasn't changed that dramatically, but the way that they're measuring it. And now we can adjust to this.
Right. Yes. And yeah, that it that has also been a question that that we've considered. We haven't gotten an answer to yet. But because in in my analysis and my math, I I haven't been able to see the reason for the decrease. So so I'm I'm either missing something, or something has changed in the formula that I'm not understanding. So which is why we've reached out for partnership with the state to make sure we really understand where we are, so that so that we can continue to move forward.
May I add also, and my curiosity also lies within, has has there been a formulaic change, but also has there been a change in the assessments, how they're written, the the changes that we've made in the specific assessments that we give, the state of Illinois preferring the ACT, you know, I think that was already six, seven years ago. And now, you know, we prefer the SAT, or, you know, what are those changes? And I know, even just in my own personal work, I've seen that test change over that short period of time. So if that might contribute to the, just like we said, maybe it's nothing we're doing egregiously wrong. Maybe it's the things that support these numbers have changed.
I also want to add that it's not about doing things right or wrong. I think it's also the needs of students have changed over the last five to eight years. So, you know, as we're taking in this data and looking at the trends, it's information, and we have to know what what variables do we have control over, influence over, and which ones don't we. But I really think it is saying are our instructional strategies and our approach is aligned with the changing needs of our students, and that that's what Charlotte is helping us answer.
And as far as the Equity Journey Continuum, I want to amplify the point that Dr. Herman made. The only of the four categories that we had a significant decrease in was advanced academic programs. And as she said, we don't know how they're measuring that, because that's not a report that we generate. So I think that's where the significant difference in that first number on the current graphic comes from. And that answer, I think, will be very helpful, because in all of the other areas, we either increased, stayed the same, or very slightly decreased. It was only in advanced academic programs, which is not something, again, we're reporting. So understanding where that's coming from, I think, has a lot to do
Yes.
with that metric.
Yes.
Pause for slide.
Charlotte Deems. So just to conclude, we have done some deep diving into the report card over a couple different presentations, looking at our summative designations, graduation rates, chronic absenteeism, and tonight proficiency rates, and the Equity Journey Continuum. And I ended my first report card presentation this way, but I want to reiterate, this is, we have not even begun to scratch the surface of the data that's available in the school and district report cards. And they are actually very user-friendly and well-designed and easy to navigate. So I I highly encourage you, if you haven't taken an opportunity already to really look at them deeply, there's many different ways that data is visualized, many ways to disaggregate and and look at things. So I encourage that. And if, as you're doing that, you have any questions, you absolutely can send me an email, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Dr. Denise Herman.
I think one other thing that would be helpful, in addition to specific questions you might have that Charlotte is so skilled at answering, she and I and Yessenia work really hard to try and structure these presentations to anticipate the kinds of information. Again, this is scratching the surface. So we try to present to you and the public things that are most essential. But there could be some other things that you want to know as part of this annual sort of highlights show. So that would be something, looking back over tonight's presentation and the one from November, and giving some feedback to Charlotte and I about which parts were most helpful to you as a board member in seeing growth or understanding the data. And are there some opportunities, you think, to include some different slides in the future? And again, don't have to wait till next August, we could bring them back. But we are always trying to improve how we present data to you, because if we're going to use data to drive decisions, it has to be presented to you in a meaningful way.
And I would say, once we can start tracking cohort data, I think that'll be very interesting. And I'll certainly leave it to you to figure out, how is that presentable?
Yes, absolutely.
And from my part, and I understand some of this is not necessarily to be presented at the board level, because it's really going into student, how you're managing. But metrics have to be actionable. There have to be some tangible actions that go with these metrics. So it'd be helpful to show what we are doing to achieve those next level of targets, even at a high level. I think that will, for me at least, have like the closed loop.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pause for next topic.
All right, we are moving on to, oh, we get to clap.
Oh, yes.
We've got to do the same thing for everyone.
Don Carmichael.
All right, moving on to 3E, an update from our Explore Multiple Paths, Strategic Goal and School Links Proposals. I'll turn it over to Benjamin Rodriguez.
Benjamin Rodriguez approaches podium. Cam returns to podium.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all tonight?
Hi, men.
A little bit my Texan accent coming out there, sorry. I'm excited to share a an update on Explore Multiple Paths in terms of the strategic goal, the work that our committees have been doing, as well as a recommendation for a platform to facilitate and scale college and career readiness efforts across the district. So excited to share that information with you tonight. So here's a quick overview. We're going to be looking at a little bit, very briefly, at the who, what, why, and how of Explore Multiple Paths. This is my first time presenting to the board, so we thought it'd be a good idea just to give it that general update in those areas, as well as to give an update as the on what the committees have been working on. We have three committees, an Explore Multiple Paths, Careers, Exploration, and Planning, and they all have their own objectives to move forward that strategic plan. And then we're wrapping up with that system recommendation. So when you think about Explore Multiple Paths, you think about purpose-driven alignment. The in other words, trying to think about ways to align our systems and supports to provide all students to have opportunities to explore multiple paths. So those are our first four questions we're going to answer first. The first one being the who, who's been working on Explore Multiple Paths with us for this past semester. I want to thank all of our great committee members, a couple that actually have been working with her in the room, but I'm super excited to have all of them on those committees, sharing their ideas, insights, perspectives, to make this work happen. So I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts. And then also, I want to talk a little bit about what. In other words, what do we mean when we say Explore Multiple Paths? Now, of course, we have the goal language, right, of all students being informed, prepared, and empowered to pursue any post-secondary path, any kind of success they're looking for after high school. But what does that really mean in terms of in the high school as well as post-high school? So in high school, we think about individualized planning, helping students and families think about what is their success after high school, and helping them develop an individualized plan to support them moving towards that that vision of success. And we also think about equipping students with skills and experiences that will help them be, give them that competitive advantage in our new economy. As you know, our economy is shifting and changing, and those skills and experiences that employers are looking for are shifting and changing as well. So how do we make sure that our support system, our educational system, is equipping students with those skills and with those experiences? Also, I'm new to the community, but what I've learned about this community is that a lot of folks stick around, right? Like people like, there's great supports, there's great businesses and networks, relationships, all built within our our great community. So a part of this effort is to really to connect students to the awesome opportunities all around them. Knowing that students will probably, in all likelihood, will return to our community for work, let's start connecting them right now to what those opportunities are while they're in high school. When we think about post-high school, the first thing is thinking about making returns on investments. We know that post-secondary education costs are rising, and it's getting more complicated in terms of that application process. So the thought is, how do we help families be thoughtful about those choices after high school? And that's the second point, making purposeful choices. As students who go to college go there, making sure that there's a purpose, there's a why, they're thoughtful about what those different items are when they go into that college application process, or trade school, military, all options after post-secondary, after high school. And one last thing on this is that we know that our younger generation, something that we've noticed is that it's not just about that paycheck, right? It's not just about making a living, but also, is there meaningful, is there meaning in the work that they're doing? Can they make an impact while they make a livable wage? And so these are the kind of things we're thinking about in a very general sense. We're talking about exploring multiple paths. Something I want to do, something that I do want to highlight is our community, how important it is to have that connections and relationships with our business partners, nonprofits, municipalities. The idea is that having aligned support from our business partners and other partners like them will help connect students to those work opportunities, building a pipeline of employee of employees, which of course, we know creates economic success. So So it's all kind of connected together of connecting the high school system with our community partners, with families, and working together to create students who are, are ready for any kind of success after they leave us at graduation. So that's very much it at a, at a high level. Now we'll talk very briefly about, so what are some of the whys behind this? You obviously know a lot about this already, but just briefly sharing a couple of things. We see four areas here. The mission and strategic plan being paramount. Number two, Illinois law has been updated, so there's some legislation supporting some of our efforts. Number three, changes in the economy in college. We could talk all night about that, we're not going to do that tonight, we're just going to share a couple of key points. And then finally, we do want to honor the local efforts by our staff in this area. So for the strategic, for the mission statement, Daring, I wanted to pull out a couple of lines that really support and highlight how important it is for students to explore post-secondary options while they're in high school. The idea is that as students move into their post-secondary objectives, we want to make sure that they have plenty of opportunities to explore and try and see what opportunities are available for them in high school. And of course, you know, it is a part of our strategic plan. There it is, there it is. Formals pass. And then also, I wanted to show a little bit about Illinois law. So while this is a local, a locally-driven effort, there are some efforts at the state that will outline and frame out our work. So this comes in the form of the Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness Act of 2016. It essentially outlines some components for school districts to look at in terms of college and career readiness. The first one being the PACE framework, the Post-Secondary and Career Expectations Framework. It's essentially a curriculum or framework for kids to go through systematic exploration in high school. They also developed the College and Career Pathway Endorsement, a credential students can earn on their diploma and transcript. They also developed Transitional Instruction, and also competency-based learning. A few other elements that I'm not necessarily touching on tonight, but just wanted to show that that, those are all components of the law as well. One other piece of law is HB 3296. So it took that original Act of 2016 and added some rules, some resources, some timelines to those pieces. So now the PACE framework is going to be required to be implemented by 2025. For those pathway endorsements, they're asking that have at least one available to the class of 2027. So that's our current freshman, two for the class of 2029, and three for the class of 2031. And they've added some rules and resources as well. So just kind of a brief overview of that. And I did want to honor the, the great work that, oh, I'm so sorry. Changes in Economy in College. So these are a few areas that, that we were thinking about in terms of how do we help families and students think about what is coming for them after they graduate Burning Hills and Libertyville High School? So these are the three areas we're going to quickly look at. Average income, alignment of education, and awareness of resources. These are definitely resources that we're thinking about as we move forward. So first is our charts like this. This is a chart that connects the idea between advanced education and income. And while that is definitely true, we want to help support students and families to also consider charts like this, where it shows that for each individual career pathway on the left, there is a range of income available for the folks who go down those pathways. And so knowing also, if you go to the right-hand column, that they all require different levels of education. So in other words, this provides a richer, more complex picture of what life is like after high school, knowing that there is a range of incomes for all of these different investments. And it's not necessarily that advanced education earns more, it's more about what is that major? What is that program that you're going into? That, that really has more connection to it. A couple other points on this is that when you look at only the median or average for those different types of income levels, it does hide the range. And so number one, we need to help, help families and students remember, we don't often start at the median for a given income range. You might start at the beginning. And also, number two, that no one's perfectly average, we're all unique. And so just because that this is the average doesn't mean necessarily that's going to be connected to your post-secondary outcome. So just equipping families and students with information like this, we feel is important. Number two, alignment of education. This is a study by Georgetown University that shows that the, what type of work will require what type of credentials in 2030. This graphic is important for us to remember because, number one, we want students to be ready to access employment at all of those levels of education, should they want to pursue it, right? So they, they should be able to pursue any type of education after high school. And also, number, a couple of questions at the bottom there. Helping families and students remember that's credentials can stack, that if you start with a certificate after high school, you can still work your way to an associate's or to a bachelor's or a master's, you can keep working your way up. It doesn't necessarily start and end with whatever that first decision is after high school. And then the second question is, how do we think about returns on investments as well? Knowing that there's different opportunities for success depending on what you're looking for after high school.
Pause for slide.
The last point on this area is awareness of opportunity. We know that colloquially, students might know about five to six different career opportunities after high school, so doctor, lawyer, teacher, police officer, and whatever their parents do, when really, there are a lot of awesome opportunities available across the economy. And we can't spend all night talking about those opportunities, but we did want to highlight the skilled trades, commercial pilots, education, technology, all sectors that are seeing great need and growth, that we want to help families and students consider them as awesome opportunities after high school.
Pause for slide.
Also, I did want to honor the great local efforts that are already happening in this area across the district, whether it's in our career and technical education programs, our college and career resource centers, there's all sorts of supports happening. And the goal of Explore Multiple Paths is to scale those efforts out across all students.
Pause for slide.
So how is that going to happen? Is the, is the last question on this part? So taking those four whys in mind with our goal statement, last year, a team of about 35 staff members pulled together and wrote an action plan for Explore Multiple Paths. That action plan has three different strands associated with, or three different objectives. The first one being careers, the second one being exploration, and the third one being planning. And here are the objectives for each of those three strands. For careers, it's all about developing those pathways, programs, such as those pathway endorsements and dual credit. For exploration, this is about designing options and opportunities for students to explore, all sorts of.
Pause to fix and change out microphone.
Hello? All right, there we go.
Momentary pause.
All right, let's go back into it, sorry. Breaking things on my first time here, sorry. So the Exploration Committee has been looking at designing options and opportunities for students to do that exploration. And the Planning Committee has been looking at what is that curriculum or framework for students to, to plan out their career goals, their post-secondary goals, and their high school planning, all in one platform. The idea is that altogether, we'll be able to develop locally shaped programs and services that will connect high schoolers with the real world around them. So we're going to go, just quickly touch on what those committees have been looking at. The Careers Committee has been looking at the College and Career Pathway Endorsement, the requirements of which are outlined right here. Happy to share a little bit more about what those requirements are, but this is a sample. The idea is to show that these are intentional endorsements that are, that go on the, on the transcript and also on the diploma. And the idea is that students can develop a, a plan to move through high school to achieve that endorsement in a particular career pathway. We also want to note that these College and Career Pathway endorsements have a specific structure with supports, coursework, and work-based learning, or professional learning. Won't go through every part of these elements, but the idea is to show that in this sample, a College and Career Pathway Endorsement for Education, there's multiple prongs and engagement for students to develop skills and get real-world experiences that'll prepare them for that particular career pathway. Now, the question is, so what, why would you be looking for this pathway endorsement on your, on your transcript, on your diploma? There's a multitude of reasons why, I'm just going to quickly highlight a few of them here. Obviously, the endemic value of the skills themselves, the local value, the idea that you get to network with local business professionals and start building up your contacts, networking with, with other folks in that career pathway. There's also some more harder currencies associated with these pathway endorsements. The two that I might mention tonight is that for folks who earn a pathway endorsement in education, you skip right to the finalist round of the Golden Apple Scholarship, which is a, is a pretty big scholarship, and you get to move pretty quickly. Another harder currency is that for manufacturing, engineering, technology, and trades, or METs, if you earn that endorsement, there's a $500 scholarship that's transferable to any post-secondary institution across the state. So if you're going to a two-year school, a four-year school, a trade school, it's all applies the same way. One last thing I want to highlight on the value is that it promotes, again, that thoughtfulness behind career planning, knowing that you can start with that career goal in mind and backwards map from there. And the other thought is that for students who go down this pathway endorsement and find out, you know what, that, that's not for me, that's still a great win, because we've helped students think ahead about, okay, if I don't want to pursue this in my post-secondary plan, I can try something else. And I've saved myself time and resources and investments.
Lisa Hessel.
As opposed to figuring it out in college, when it could be a very expensive way to figure it out.
That, that's exactly it, right. How do we help students think about those things now in high school, see what works for them individually, before making the, the big swing later on, so to speak?
Yeah.
So this committee has a few updates. The first one is that they have worked on two College and Career Pathway Endorsement applications. They are in IT or Information Technology and Computer Programming. The second one is in Human Public Services, Early Childhood Education. Both of these applications will be submitted to the state by this Friday, they're, they're already written, we're just tweaking some of the language. And the idea is to have these endorsements offered to students next school year. The other thing that this pathway committee has, that this committee's been working on is programs related to those endorsements, and also our dual-credit strategy as well, knowing that that's a great way for students to build up credits in high school to, to get some of those currencies ahead of time that will help support them in their post-secondary journey.
Ben, can I just clarify one thing? You said, we hope to have those available for students next year. Not next year, as in fall, for families who might be listening. The, the application is going in, it will hopefully will be approved next spring, and then it would come back to the board to approve those as a course sequence. So students would be able to make that choice of courses the following year. So planning this year, students could course select the following year.
Yes, yes.
And which class is it open to? Is, would it be the incoming freshman in 2025?
2027. Yeah, yeah, so, no, no, so.
This year's freshman could.
Yeah, this year's freshman, yeah.
Okay, as juniors and seniors.
Yep, so it'll be right in line with where the, the timeline of the law is, so it will be good.
Momentary pause.
Yes, good clarification, yes. In terms of next steps with this committee, they're going to be continuing to develop that dual-credit strategy to systematically expand those opportunities across the district. They'll also be working on supporting those College and Career Pathway endorsements.
Pause to fix and change out microphone.
Testing. All right. All right. We're going to try this again. If, if it happens a third time, maybe I shouldn't stop. All right, yeah, moving along. Quickly, the Exploration Team is working on those framework of options, options and opportunities for students to do career exploration. Some ideas are listed up there. For them, they've worked on developing that internship course that the board approved last, at the last curriculum approval process. So that option will be available for students to sign up for in January, and they can start taking those internship experiences in fall. So that's super exciting and excited for those opportunities. They're continuing to working on that full framework that you saw on the slide before, as well as thinking about what are those resources and forms we'll need to make sure work-based learning. There's forms in terms of safety and agreements and those kind of things. Anytime you have students moving offsite, we want to make sure all of those, all of our bases are covered.
Pause for slide.
For planning, this committee has been working specifically on the PACE framework that we've outlined in these three questions right there. There's benchmarks for all levels in terms of career exploration, post-secondary planning, and financial aid and literacy. They've been working on that plan. Something that we do want to mention that, that will, will entail time requirements. So having students time to do that individualized plan for career exploration, post-secondary planning, and financial aid and literacy. This isn't just a large review, I believe this is an attachment as well, if you want to take, take a look at that. The online platform is, was what this committee was working on to help facilitate that PACE framework across the district. There's lots of options, we'll talk about the committee's recommendation in just a moment.
Pause for slide.
In terms of updates, they engaged in learning on this PACE framework, did an audit of services, and have come out with a recommendation for a platform to facilitate it. And their next step are, next steps are to come back to with a PACE framework for you to approve, as well as to support that platform integration if approved. And that is where we're going to go, move and shift to that platform recommendation, which entailed that last committee. So we'll quickly talk about what does that readiness system do, that platform do? We'll talk about the evaluation process briefly, what is that recommendation, and some logistics. I will just quickly touch through that it does lots of things. High school planning, post-secondary planning, service system data reports, experience management. The idea is that this system should be able to move a lot of things along for the district. That evaluation process involved this pre-screening, rubric development that had some priorities outlined, vendor screening, demos and discussions, other steps. So we had students try out the systems, we talked to other districts who used a variety of different systems. And we also made sure that we had staff try out all of the different systems, their demo accounts, those kind of things. Using that rubric of priorities, the committee has brought forth School Links as that option. I'm going to just quickly touch that there, there's a lot of reasons why this committee chose this system. A couple that I'll highlight is that was ranked as the highest option. They, we also noted that it was the only option to completely hit all priorities of the rubric with current customers. Some of our, some of the vendors we talked to said, oh, yes, that's on our development roadmap, but it's not out yet. And so we wanted to make sure that when there was a recommendation, that there was a system that could truly make an impact right away. Positive feedback, there's a high adoption rate. This is a system that can facilitate career pathways to students in terms of exploration, so we wanted to make, make those highlights as well. This is a proposal for an 18-month contract. Essentially, it's broken up into two billing cycles. January would be the implementation and training fee, which has already been budgeted. And then in July would be the subscription fee, the yearly subscription fee of $40,625. That quote, should, you should have a copy of that quote, but we try to break down what each part of that quote does for us. So you'll see lots of elements there in terms of the graduation academic success, platform one price, data suite, work-based learning. The idea is that this platform can do quite a few things for us. This is our proposed timeline. Generally, the idea is that we want to have staff to start learning the system, start integrating our, our power school systems with this platform in the spring, so that way families can meaningfully engage with it in the fall.
Pause for slide.
We are recommending School Links as the best option for a college and career readiness platform to scale and facilitate all of the other committees' work in terms of college and career pathway endorsements, facilitating work-based learning, career exploration, the PACE framework. The idea is that this platform will facilitate all of those initiatives together in one space.
Pause for slide.
There's our strand team, and thank you so much for bearing with me and three microphones.
Thank you, this is awesome. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, wearing my parent hat here. Just from an integration standpoint, does this system also integrate with like your college board?
Sunal Kulkarni.
ACT and such, so that you could sort of see power schools, my internal grades, my external grades, like what Naviance does today?
Yes, yeah, this system would be a replacement for Naviance and SCORE. So all of that same data that Naviance gets, School Links would get in process as well.
Sunal Kulkarni.
And then as you look at, I think my standard thing that I always say when you're looking at software purchases, is make sure you know what the growth rate is beyond year one. Try to keep it at 3% and not more. So just keep that in mind as you go through your contract negotiating.
Lisa Hessel.
Thank you.
Yep. Did you look at the contract for that language? We're going to be approving 18 months. 18 months.
Yeah, 2018 months, I'm talking about beyond.
Longer term, thank you.
Any other questions?
Pause for questions. Lisa Hessel.
I just returned from a brief break, so did we get to the end of this recommendation? Okay. The thing that I wanted to note, in addition to, most importantly, you and your team, your committee deciding that School Links was the best fit for our district. I did also want to recall our last meeting, where both Parab and Louis, our student school board reps, who have been in their respective CRCs as seniors working with School Links, both had really great things to say about it.
Momentary pause.
And finally, the main high school district, 207, they're 10 years ahead of us in terms of implementing pathways, programs. Their superintendent, Ken Wallace, said they tried everything, and they settled on School Links and recommend that it's by far the best for what it is trying to do. So just wanted to add that to the mix when we're talking about approving this at the regular board meeting.
Jim Batson.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I happen to know another district.
I happen to know another district that went from Naviance to School Links about a year ago, very successfully, so.
Pause for discussion. Don Carmichael.
So we should also point out that's not an additional cost. We're now changing platforms, something that we're already paying for.
Momentary pause.
In another way.
May I just, and this isn't a question for Mr. Rodriguez, but just a, just general question.
Kara Benjamin.
I'm in year three, sitting on this board. And every year, several times a year, we're proposed, you know, new systems to onboard and train and all of this. And if it supports our goals, then I'm all for it. But I think, just as a, someone who's part of the oversight of the finances of our district, like all of us, I would love to see just kind of where we're at with all these systems. I would love some type of inventory, our yearly costs. And I'm sure, I'm sure this happens to a degree already to make sure we're not kind of double dipping our needs, if that makes sense, that we're not.
Redundant.
Redundant, thank you, in what we are subscribed to. But I would just, I think I would appreciate kind of a, you know, larger scale look at what we currently do subscribe to, how we're using it.
For all of our district-wide software.
I suppose so.
Okay.
Is that okay to request that? Okay.
Momentary pause.
Yeah, it's just every year we, we take on more and more and more. And so I'm curious sometimes what happens to our older systems or softwares that we no longer use? Or do they expire? Do we just not renew, et cetera? So I don't know if my colleagues would feel comfortable requesting that information, but I think it could be useful just as we have these discussions ongoing. Thank you.
Don Carmichael.
Well, Ben, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you for your recommendation.
Momentary pause.
I'm assuming we have no other questions on that point, so we'll go to item four, future.
One, I mean, this is still only, the contract is only for one year, so I don't know when you go to renew it.
Sonal Kulkarni.
What the increase? I mean, after, the first six months appears to be just like build of the application and then the actual subscription is after that. And what happens after that as we want this software longer than 18 months?
Dr. Denise Herman.
So typically, that would be a group working on that. Ben is the content lead, but it would be Dan with reviewing all contracts. And then Temple would also be involved in terms of all the backend and making sure we can continue to sustain it. Those three people together help review any of those district-wide technology.
Yeah, typically for our major software systems, you know, we'll start with the one year, see how it goes, and then they'll submit a renewal essentially that we build into the budget. But we try to negotiate and it's a little, been a little bit more difficult the last couple of years with inflation. But the narrative of just our limit to 5% CPI has been fruitful. And even with School Links, like originally, they were going to, they were going to charge us the six months for the implementation, so that was 20 grand. But we were able to convince them to let us not do that. And just, it's a pilot. We're getting set up. We're not really, students aren't actually using it. So they were willing to waive that. So we try to look at it. It's a little bit difficult sometimes on software. Some places know that they have the leverage, but we try to talk to them and we're usually able to have pretty successful conversations.
And did I understand that this is in place of Naviance? So.
Correct. Libertyville High School uses Naviance. Vernon Hills uses SCORE. SCORE has no cost. This would replace SCORE. It would also replace Naviance. It doesn't offset the whole cost. And this system does a lot more than what Naviance would do, but it would replace that. It would.
Universally, right?
Yes.
So that would allow the district to look at cumulative data for the whole district and then parse it down however would be required.
Pause for next topic. Don Carmichael.
Moving on to future agenda items, there are a number of items listed. Is there anything anybody else would like to place on the agenda for our future P&amp;P meetings? Very good. I'm going to adjourn the committee meeting and turn it over to FNF and Dr. Batson.
Jim Batson.
Thank you. We have a few items here. We'll try to get through as quickly as possible. So for those coming in for the board meeting, we're still in committee. This will be the Facilities and Finance Committee starting now. And then we'll follow this with the regular board meeting. So I'll call and order the Facilities and Finance for December 11th.
Momentary pause.
First item is invitation for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the Facilities and Finance Committee tonight? Thank you. Come on up.
James O'Keefe approaches podium.
The microphone gremlins are out tonight.
Good evening. My name is James O'Keefe. I'm a junior at Libertyville High School and I'm also a member of the ECOS Club. On the meeting agenda today, you will be discussing the process of going out to bid for solar energy panels when the roofs at LHS are being replaced. As you may be aware, the US government recently released the Fifth National Climate Assessment, which paints a grim picture of the impacts that we can expect from climate change, including regional predictions of increased weather extremes. To mitigate the impacts of climate change and avoid the most grim projections, we all need to be aggressively working towards carbon neutrality. Many businesses and government institutions are adopting climate action plans to intentionally decarbonize their facilities while reaping economic incentives and benefits by generating energy on-site. School districts are working with students and community stakeholders to develop climate action plans with the help of nonprofit organizations such as K-12 Climate Action. Us students at LHS want our school to be a role model in sustainability, a school that others, others look to for inspiration and admiration. We don't want to be a school lagging behind neighboring districts when it comes to sustainability. As a student in this district, I urge the board to consider partnering with our students and community members to draft and adopt a district climate action plan to ensure that social, economic, and environmental aspects of sustainability are appropriately considered when we decide how we as a district spend money on capital projects. Let's work together to prepare for the future instead of dealing with the consequences of our inaction down the line. Going solar is one crucial big step in the right direction towards achieving sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pause for the public. Finley Rowan approaches podium.
Good evening. My name is Finley Rowan and I am a co-president of ECOS, the Environmental Policy and Sustainability Club at LHS. I am here to advocate for the expansion of solar energy in our district as a part of a larger focus on sustainability that aligns with our Daring mission. We seek to have our districts be nimble and global when moving forward in sustainability efforts. The few solar panels installed at LHS and Vernon Hills are producing only a tiny fraction of our total electricity consumption. We are behind other stools in our area when it comes to sustainability. Highland Middle Stool and Stevenson High Stool are two local examples of stools that have made substantial investments in solar energy. By delaying a transition to solar energy, we have become further behind other districts and lose ground in the looming threat of global climate change. Our electrical energy likely comes from unclean coal sources that add extra CO2 into the atmosphere, heisting climate change. The recently released Fifth National Climate Assessment states that the US now experiences, on average, a billion-dollar weather or climate disaster every three weeks. We must do our part to reduce our reliance on electricity generated from fossil fuels and work to decarbonize our buildings and prevent increases in costly disasters. There may be ways to offset this worthwhile cost through grants and funding that the district can look into, and ECOS is here to help with that. I am also here to ask the district to devise a climate action plan that incorporates sustainability into our decision-making processes. There are many resources available to assist districts in drafting sustainability policies that could help us achieve climate neutrality by 2050 as the Fifth National Climate Assessment indicates that we must do to avoid the most drastic impact of climate change. Members of ECOS welcome the opportunity to work with the board and community stakeholders to develop a coherent district policy alongside the Daring mission that honors our social, economic, and environmental responsibilities to this and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you both coming out and speaking. Anybody else care to address the Facilities and Finance Committee?
Pause for the public.
Okay, hearing none. We'll move on with the agenda. First up is the Fiscal Year 25 Budget Prep Resolution. Here we are already talking about FY25.
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, hard to believe. We're not even six months into the current fiscal year, but now it's time to make, begin preparations for the next year's fiscal budget. So this is an annual process we usually do around this time of year to give authority to kind of get that process started.
Jim Batson.
And we'll vote on this later in the evening at the regular board meeting.
Oh, forgive me. I also forgot, part of this is also talking about a timeline. So I included information there in terms of what a timeline could look like for.
Dan Stanley.
Budget adoption. So still targeting the June board meeting for adoption. Really, the question is, when would you have the hearing? Last year, we had the hearing the same night as budget adoption. If, and so that, that's essentially the dates I put in there. Option one is you have the hearing the same night there. But if you wanted to have the hearing before then, really what would be required is, to do it within a reasonable timeframe would be to schedule a special meeting in June, an additional meeting in June to allow for that hearing. One of the big drivers of this that impacts is that before the hearing, for 30 days, the tentative budget has to be posted. So even if, say you have the hearing on June 10th, that means the tentative budget has to be posted by May 10th. And so I just know typically on the timeline, we've, April is a preliminary budget, May is tentative, and then June would be final. My ability to craft a tentative budget before May is not realistic. So those are just a few options you could do in terms of when you would have the hearing. Essentially, when would you have that hearing?
I might suggest too, that the, so the June 24th meeting is a combined meeting like tonight.
Momentary pause.
In essence, because historically during the summer, we've only had one board meeting night a month in June, July. If we're going to think about another board, you know, a special board meeting just for this and that's pushing the agenda up, maybe it would, it's something to consider for June, having our standard Facilities Finance program personnel earlier in the month like we normally do and allow for the board meeting to have the, the additional, what do you call it? The hearing during the, just ahead of the, or at the, at the beginning of the board meeting so that we're not trying to cram all four of those things into one evening.
You could, having the hearing is a, is a formal board meeting. So if you did it on the, like if you did the committees in June, for example, you'd still have to have a special board meeting for the hearing. You couldn't tag it to a committee meeting. It'd have to be its own special meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does.
Does that solve for the issue of giving you enough time to prepare and post it 30 days ahead?
The, the, both timelines I put, I think are realistic just because even May 10th, my target would be to have a tentative budget to you for that May 13th committee meeting. And so that would mean we'd have to have the budget posted on that Friday before. And I would, I would plan that, that's, that would be my target to have it done by anyways. So it's a, to me, it's a reasonable timeline.
Yeah, the difference between these two is having the hearing and the approval on the same night, June 24th, which we did last year. But I think one goal is to try and, again, not have the hearing and the vote on the same night. So we put a second option there for you. Again, we are showing the community the budget several times in the initial, you know, the preliminary. But again, this was Dan and my attempt to try and give you options for increased transparency with the community.
Dan Stanley.
For example, if you wanted to go, so the option that is not visible to you is if you, the meeting sooner than the June 24th is the May board meeting. And the May board meeting would require the tentative budget posted at the end of April and that is, that's just not a realistic timeline I can achieve.
Don Carmichael.
So then the question is, is it okay for the board to have a special meeting before the June regular meeting? And I would say I'm open to that.
Jim Batson.
And the other piece of that would be, does it just then make sense to have our committees separate from, so that we're not trying to do all this in one night? And that we can do it at the same time as long as we're getting together for the hearing anyway?
And that's not a decision you have to make right now?
Right, right.
Momentary pause.
Yeah, but that's good information. Okay. No, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, we good with the budget? Okay, solar on roofs. This is a topic that I think a few people hear.
Yeah, at a, at a board meeting, I can't remember exactly which one. It was requested that when we're looking at our roofs, that we get an alternate to include solar. So I had been thinking about that since and talking with Mark and talking with a few of our consultants. And I'm not sure that we can do what was specifically requested. Part of the reason for that is because the people that put solar on are not the same trades as the people that put roofs on. So we, we would have bids out for roofs that were expecting bids from roofing contractors to bid on that. They would not likely be in a position to bid on that, the trade of installing solar. And so I don't think we can get an alternate that has the solar. However, talking with some folks, I do think that what we could do, like the, the one extreme is that you would develop two bids for each project. You would develop a bid for the roof and a bid for solar for that roof. And those two bids would run concurrently.
Momentary pause.
Or what you could do is, and the other thing that I think is more realistic is we likely can share the roofing information we have with solar folks and then they can give us an estimate on what they think it would be. I don't think it would be very hard for them to analyze and estimate a solar system.
Momentary pause.
It's a solar system for that. So I, I would recommend, I think, for, to try to achieve the request the board gave, is we would still continue with the roofing contractor, but on the side, ask for a solar consultant to give us an idea of what a solar system would be and what the approximate cost would be. In a future meeting, I would like us to talk about the cost because the cost, it, it depends on the models that you're going with, and I think that deserves its own conversation. Because the way you pay for it, there's a, there's a wide spectrum on options to pay for them. And some of them, each of them have their own pros and cons. And so I think we can talk about that as well. One thing we are working on right now, Mark with his team, is to gather the information on the roofs that we've completed within the last couple of years to provide that, to see what solar options we have available. Because we do believe there are options available that would require very little, if any, money down right now. Which right now, that's our biggest obstacle because of our other capital projects and kind of how the priorities fell in that process. So I would like to bring that in. Once I get more concrete information on that, I'd like to bring that perhaps at the same discussion at a future meeting.
Don Carmichael.
How future?
Momentary pause.
Like we could theoretically, we have roofs right now that are ready. We could put out a request for proposals.
Momentary pause.
Tomorrow.
Momentary pause.
Uh, I don't know if we could do it tomorrow. Mark and his team are actively looking at it right now. They've been looking at it for a couple of weeks. We've got some data. I.
Momentary pause.
I think it's.
Momentary pause.
Possible and realistic to talk about this in, at our January meeting. Part of the problem is just looking at capacity. We have a lot of, we have a lot of things going out to bid right now for summer. And so there's a lot of prep in terms of a lot of different bids happening right now. But the roofing stuff doesn't require us to bid it out. It's more just getting the data and then sharing that and getting that information back. So I would target a January committee meeting to at least continue the conversation and see what data we have yet. Because as much as that's kind of far away from now with the winter break, it's not very far away.
Jim Batson.
I would also be interested in how the bids for any roofing projects we do now, if there's any information in there to allow them to be more compatible with solar panels on top of those roofs after the fact so that we're not having to come back and retrofit something.
That's actually what I thought our initial request was. Is that any roofing project going forward that.
Don Carmichael.
We would be doing whatever was necessary to make that roof ready for solar.
Yeah.
Lisa Hessel.
Yeah, those are.
In addition to that, there was also a request for the upcoming to see if there was a solar alternate. I understand doing it in alternate fashion is probably not realistic. But I would, I think, amplifying.
I think we're on the same page, Jim.
Make sure the roofers know it's something that we are considering for the future so that their bids could come in so that they would be compatible with solar. And it's, it's also, doesn't hurt asking if they have solar contracting partners that they work with. I don't think it's too far-fetched. I don't think it's too far-fetched to think, asking the question is, is certainly a possibility.
Yeah. And so I, I have it, there were, those were distinct requests. They were very, they're very parallel requests and very similar, but they were distinct in terms of making sure when we are roofing, when we are doing roofing, that we're looking to make them solar-ready. And then when we do get roofing bids, that we get an alternate that includes the solar. So we are still doing the, the first one for sure. And then analyzing our current roofs to see, because really, the idea of solar-ready is really two things. One is the roof strong enough to hold panels. And most of the roofs are, it just depends on how many panels. So some of them maybe can hold many, some not as many. And then the other one is whether or not there's already been conduit run between the roof and interior to allow, so you don't have to penetrate a roof when you're trying to install things like that.
Yeah, it makes sense. So do we just place that as an agenda item for FNF in January then? Thank you.
And maybe not for January, but the students have said that they can help with figuring out how to pay for it. So I think if we can get their inputs, that would be, that'd be great. If not January, then shortly after.
I think we also just want to be sensitive to the resources that we have available, both in terms of staff, as well as, you know, the time that it takes to pursue these things. So as much as we're interested in pursuing this information, I think there also has to be some accommodation for what capacity our team has on the path of the things on our capital improvements plan that are already in the works. So we are prepared to be accommodating in terms of how long it's going to take to make these things happen. We, we recognize there's a limitation of, of time and people and resources.
And I appreciate that. And we're, we're moving forward on it. So I'll, I'll let you know where we're at in January.
Make sure it stays on the radar. Thank you. Next on the agenda, 10-year health life safety plan update.
Yeah, so in the summer, we had our 10-year life safety plan approved for Vernon Hills. And so a few months ago, I told you, we're going to continue to bring forward you the priority A items, the priority A items. Those are the items on the list that need to be resolved within one year. So every two months, going to give you an update on where those are. So the report is in there. The yellow color means that's what has changed. Some of them realizing a lot of, some of those things have been completed. There is an upcoming bid still that they're working on. But our target to have everything done would be by this spring.
Okay. Any questions on the, on the list? Okay, thanks for the, the update on that.
I should, summer, sorry. Most of the things in spring, the, the, the summer part is going to involve some trades, and they probably could only do the work once school's out.
No other questions? We'll move on. The LHS graduation at Now Arena, 25, 26.
Yeah, so the 24 graduation is set for LHS. We had just a few months ago, looked at what the 24 graduation would be for Vernon Hills. The Now Arena is very eager to get an agreement in place for the 25 and 26 graduations for Libertyville. And so the district leadership team had talked about timing and felt really comfortable with 2025 with Now Arena. And we'll see what happens with Vernon Hills. They haven't lived through Rosemont yet. But 2026 was still a question. And so we have the, we have the language in there, but we have language that gives us flexibility in 2026 should a different decision, meaning maybe, who knows? We just don't know what could be in, in that far ahead. And so we wanted to give ourselves some flexibility. So the prices are there. It's a, it is a, they did agree to a 5% increase. The increase from the last year, or the, the, sorry, the increase for this year is actually flat from the year before. So pretty good about the numbers.
Okay. Any questions regarding this? And as long as we have that flexibility of making a different decision the following year, I think that, that's helpful, because we'll know a lot more by this time next year. Community engagement firm.
So at the November board meet, or, excuse me, the November committee meeting. Yeah, committee meeting, not board meeting. We presented information on how to access additional funding for, to do the capital projects. And so part of that process was, the next step was recommended to us to look at community engagement firms, to talk to our community and, and partner and engage with our community. And so since then, Denise, Mary, and I have been looking into this. We've, we have talked to several firms and interviewed four of them. We received four proposals last Wednesday and reviewed them, but weren't quite ready yet to make a recommendation for tonight. We are, we, we believe we have a finalist that we're interested in, but we still need to do some homework first. Given the timeline, we feel that getting a community engagement firm decided on before the new year is better than waiting till after the new year to get the process going. And so one of the things we talked about was potentially doing a special meeting a week from today for the community engagement. Yeah, I don't know, Mary or Denise, I don't know if there's anything else to add.
I mean, our January board meeting is a little off-kilter because of the Martin Luther King holiday, and we moved it back because of the January 9th return back to school. So our next meeting, committee meeting, wouldn't be until the 16th, and then the board meeting until the 28th. So that would be postponing some of the important work that the engagement firms would want to do in terms of making connections with community leaders and other things like that. So we feel strongly that if the board is open to adding a short special meeting next Monday night, we would have everything we need to make a recommendation to the board and to have that finalist available to answer questions to the board also. So if that doesn't work with the board's schedule, we can still go with a January timeline. It would just compress some of the work that we need to do in the spring.
Yeah, it's 50, roughly 50 days between now and the next board meeting.
And if I could also add, oh, this is really loud. We are looking at some of the top firms that schools in our area are using, and a lot of them are booking up very quickly. So in addition to wanting to start the work, we don't want to lose the opportunity of maybe being able to work with some of the high-flying firms.
Any other questions?
Is this something to add another board meeting? Would we need to vote on that? Or do we just need to agree and then give proper notice? Okay. So are you looking for agreement for that special meeting right now?
Or at the general meeting, but why not do it now?
Yeah, while we're
I'm okay.
Yep, works for me.
Is this going to be at 5:30 or 7?
We could schedule it at the convenience of the board, because it's a special meeting, so we can set the time. We'll just make sure it's very well communicated to the public, so they can attend.
In my opinion, it's easier for people who work to attend a 7:00 PM meeting, even if they're only attending virtually.
So it would be next Monday night at 7:00 PM.
Okay, moving on, late December supplemental check run. Will we need to take action on this to give you permission, or?
I can't remember if it's on the board. We took it, we didn't put it in. Yeah, so it's really more just a heads up that because there's a 50-day gap, we'll, we'll have bills that we'll need to pay between now and 50 days from now. And so we will pay those necessary bills and inform you at our next meeting on what was paid. It'd be regular business type of things.
It is not on the regular board meeting for action.
I think we should be okay, unless somebody has any concerns with that. Okay, moving on, there's two items here, disposal of equipment, the LHS tier four system and some IT disposal items. These are pretty routine. Anyone have any questions or comments about those? Those will be on the agenda for tonight. Future agenda items, there's really only one for the January FNF.
But we just recently added the solar.
We'll add the one that we just discussed, and then anyone else have any other
Also going to review bids for radon testing.
We want to have bids for radon testing, but we'll be able to review the radon information quote that we have.
That'll go on the January meeting. Okay, anything else?
Just reiterating what Lisa, you said, this is a lot of bidding, a lot of RFPs. It's very time-consuming to read everything, pick somebody. So thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, then we will call the facilities and finance adjourn. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start the regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes, thank you for your patience.
Fade into board members seated at table.
Good evening. We're going to call to order the regular board meeting for Community High School District 128, 7:26 PM. We're starting a little late, so we're going to get rolling right away. We have already done the Pledge of Allegiance, and we are going to start with a roll call whenever you're ready, Carol.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin. Don Carmichael. Cara Drumke. Lisa Hessel. Middleish Cotwell. Sinal Kulkarni.
We note all members present. Quick agenda review, we're going to start out with communication. We've got some recognition. We're very happy to have tonight. We have some guests that we're going to recognize. Then we will have our invitation for public comment. There was no one that signed in, but we will still ask in case there's anybody here that wishes to address the board. We will hear from our teachers' union with a report, and then our student school board representative reports, our FOIA requests, and then some good news that Dr. Herman will share with us. Our consent vote agenda includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion, minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, ed tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, financial reports. These items have gone through extensive board committee review and recommendation, and all of the documentation concerning these items has been provided both to the board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items can be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Are there any board members wishing to remove items from the consent vote agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to items for action. We have a, an approval coming out of PNP for a platform called School Links. And then from FNF, we have two action items, the resolution to prepare the fiscal year '25 budget, as well as the approval of a contract for LHS graduation. For discussion, we will have board policies first reading, and then for information, our superintendent's report, any shared comments among the board of events they've attended. Do we have an ISB report? A brief ISB report from our delegate, Jim Batson. We do not have a, we do? I can give a brief seat-all update. There was one relevant item from the meeting that I attended. And then if we have any other reports. And then we'll get to future agenda items, and we will adjourn. So let's start out with recognition.
I think we are going to start this evening with our principals and student recognition.
Okay, Dr. G, take it away.
All right, good stuff. We've got a lot to recognize tonight. I'm going to bring up, to start, Coach Chris Wolf, who's going to introduce one of his All-State runners tonight for us. Coach Wolf.
First, I want to thank you for recognizing us tonight and taking the time to have us in your agenda. This is Anna Lester. I met Anna one week left the summer camp this past summer. She joined our program very late, but we were so thrilled to have her. When I got an email from Brian McDonald over the summer saying we were getting a new senior in our program from Morgantown, West Virginia, immediately I had to go look her up online. And boy, was I glad she was coming to our program, because she is quite an athlete. When I first met her, she was very mature, and what I could really tell most about her is that she just loved running. It was like in her blood. Our program philosophy has kind of three main pillars, work hard, be, be strong, and think big. And Anna fits those perfectly. From the extra long runs that she did all season long, and I mean, long, long runs, like 70-minute-plus-long runs on Sundays, to doing 800s one day in the dark after she had a long college visit. She never gave up on any workout, and it showed on the, the results she had this season. She's also a very strong individual, mentally tough is one thing I always think of when I think of Anna. Moving to a new school, meeting new friends, new program, new coach, new training philosophy, she handled it beautifully, because it'll keep her focused the entire season while getting all this newness that she had to experience. But finally, our last one, think big, was something that I immediately noticed about Anna, that she immediately told me that she wanted to break the school record of 1711, which was set in 2015 by Vivian Overbeck. And not really knowing Anna, I'm like, okay, yeah, let's, let's go for that. And every single practice, every single meet, she kept on chipping away, chipping away, chipping away, and she eventually smashed that record at the state meet. She was conference champ in a tremendous monsoon of a cross-country meet that I have never experienced in my life, and still had the focus and the fortitude to run strong that day. Third at regionals, where she was beaten by a girl from McHenry that she had beaten before, but then came back at sectionals, took fourth place, beat that McHenry girl, but then got beaten by a Barrington girl, who she had beaten before. But finally, she saved the best for last, finishing fourth in state, the highest place, or I guess lowest place, you could say, in school history, breaking our school record, running 1703. And we'll see if that's broken, but that's pretty darn fast. She ran with the big schools this year. It was our first year in 3A, and finishing fourth place in the state meet is a tremendous achievement. So congratulations, Anna. We're proud of you. I am humbled by you, and we, we're excited for your future at Eastern Kentucky.
All right, I'll keep rolling here, and I'll bring up Coach Mike McCallu, who is our varsity boys soccer head coach.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak on behalf of Nikita Stepanov. Nikita is a senior here. I have been fortunate since 2013 to work with phenomenal athletes, student athletes, and been supported by the board and administration, and most importantly, their parents. In my 26-year coaching career, I have sent six players, well, I shouldn't say sent, to help six players become All-State, four of which have been in the school. And Nikita is the first in my coaching career that has been a defender. And I want to speak to that a little bit, because most of All-State players get recognized in soccer in the state for scoring a lot of goals, having a lot of assists. It's not very often that defenders are recognized. He has been the heart and soul of our program for the last two to three years. He was our leading goal scorer from a defensive position this year with nine goals, eight of which were set pieces, which if anybody knows much about soccer, you talk about Lionel Messi and Cristiano Ronaldo, people that really epitomize what a set piece is. And everybody that we played against knew that Nikita, when a set piece came, like, watch out. So more importantly than his athletic ability and skill set is him being humble, him being a true leader. He will make any university institution proud, not only to be there, but to be a teammate. He's yet decided where he's going to go, but he has a lot of opportunities, and we can't wait for his future. So thank you, Nikita, and thank everybody else.
Okay, we'll keep rolling. Coach Gerber, coming up to talk a little bit about one of our phenomenal tennis players this year.
Hello, I'm Coach Doug Gerber. Paulina apologizes that she can't make it tonight. She's out playing tennis, which is part of the reason why she has one of these right now coming from you. So thank you so much for honoring her. Her season was 22-5 as an individual. She then qualified for sectionals out of the Warren Gurney sectional, which included Libertyville, Stevenson, Warren, and Lake Forest, among others. She is the first girl in Vernon Hills history to qualify for 2A. There are two classes in tennis. She's the first to qualify for state at the 2A position. We were in 1A for a little bit and then got bumped up. She had a phenomenal sectional, and then went to state and finished 3-2 over tough two days with weather and everything else. She is only a sophomore, so we are looking forward some good things to come. Uh, she is only a sophomore, so we are looking forward to some good things to come. So, thank you very much, and no pictures are necessary at this time.
Dr. John Gil Liam.
All right, then to, uh, finish off with Vernon Hills recognition tonight, uh, next to me is Olivia Tron. Uh, Olivia is, uh, with us tonight as a member of our girls swim and dive team. She's actually a diver. Uh, Olivia is one of those who, uh, I think by nature is a gymnast, right? Uh, but, and quite an amazing, amazing and accomplished gymnast. She's been here before for gymnastics, uh, but she's one of these athletes that has been able to translate that skill into jumping off a diving board and doing similar tricks. And, uh, if you've ever seen her compete, uh, in dive, you would be amazed. So, uh, she had quite a successful year this year. Her coach, Coach Tanner, is not, uh, able to be with us tonight. Um, he sends his regards, uh, but, uh, let's see. So, Liv, you were Central Suburban North champs, right? As a team. Uh, what, what did you place there? Do you remember? I'm sure she placed very well. We'll ask mom. That's all right. Uh, then, uh, sectional, so was fourth in conference, you remember what sectionals? Fifth in sectionals, headed to Westmont for the state meet, which she placed ninth in the state, so congratulations to you.
Students receive certificates and takes pictures with school board members. Dr. Tom Koulentas approaches the podium.
All right, it was wonderful to see all of our Vernon Hills athletes, and we have, uh, several Libertyville High School athletes to celebrate as well tonight. So, we are going to start by bringing up our, uh, swim and dive coaches, Coach Herman and Coach Fowler, and they're going to talk about some swimmers and divers.
Coach Herman and Coach Fowler approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Dave Fowler, the diving coach. Um, talking about Ally, I've been with Ally for four years, and they've been four wonderful years. She's been varsity all four years, um, a great team leader, had a wonderful year this year, um, did well at our invitationals, our Lake County, in fact, I think she won Lake County. Um, sectional, she got second, and then at the state meet, she had a wonderful meet and finished eighth, just a tick ahead of Vernon Hills.
Student receives certificate.
Uh, Dr. Introduce the Libertyville High School swim team. My name's Greg Herman, I'm head coach. I got called off the bench last year, uh, to come in and, and, uh, coach these girls, and I will have to say that I've coached many teams. This is one of the most phenomenal teams I've ever worked with, and not just as swimming talent, but as amazing people. So, uh, these young women, uh, accomplish great things. So, I'd like to introduce them to you real quick. Um, we're missing two. Sophia Tien Ellis and Logan Howard are both members of our team. Sophia, uh, set two individual school records at the state meet, finishing, um, 12th in the 100 freestyle and fifth in the 100 backstroke. Was also part of our, uh, 400 freestyle relay, which set a school record at the state meet as well. So, she's not here with us tonight, Logan was on that relay as well, they couldn't make it. But I do have these three amazing ladies, okay? First of all, at the far end is Annie Locke. She, uh, qualified individually in the 100-yard freestyle for state, and was a member of both the 200 medley relay, which finished, uh, with All-State honors, and the 400 freestyle relay as well, finished with All-State honors and a school record. Next, we have, um, Ellie Schaefer. Uh, Ellie qualified individually in the 100-yard breaststroke for the state meet and was sectional champion in that event. Uh, she was also a member of the 200 medley relay, which received All-State honors, uh, this year. And finally, we have Leah Chung. Leah was a member of both our 200 and 400-yard freestyle relays, uh, and part of the school record relay, uh, 400 freestyle relay that, uh, finished, uh, with All-State honors as well. So, all three of these ladies were amazing, uh, they're all All-State swimmers, and, um, uh, Annie is a sophomore, Ellie is a junior, we lose Leah as a senior this year.
Dr. Tom Koulentas.
All right, our tennis coaches were not able to make it tonight, so I get to play the role of tennis coach and, um, introduce one of our All-State athletes in tennis. This is Hadley Warren, and she finished third in the All-State doubles competition. Your partner is unable to make it tonight, correct? And that's Thea Breslow. And we also had, uh, Lena, um, Dogodowsky, she finished second in All-State singles. But let's talk about Hadley and the third All-State, third-place All-State doubles team. Um, we won conference, the NSC? Second place, we didn't lose to Stevenson, did we? It was close, it was close. Then we went to, um, regionals, how'd we do there? Same thing, second place, okay? All right? And then we moved to sectionals, competition at sectionals, same thing. So, we are consistent. Absolutely. Where was our state meet this year?
Pause for discussion.
Uh, just kind of, you, did you play at a specific school, or were you in a couple schools for the state? You were all over for that, for the state meet. And how'd your state meet go? Give me, give me some, uh, some feelings about your state competition.
Pause for discussion.
Awesome. And finished, um, All-State for, for the year, um, in doubles, and, um, second was Lena, and, um, we are extremely proud of you guys, um, for what you've accomplished, and wish you all the best.
Students receive certificates and takes pictures with school board members for about the next 30 seconds. Dr. Tom Koulentas.
All right, well, um, while we are certainly proud of our student athletes at Vernon Hills and Libertyville and our coaches, we, uh, tonight also get to celebrate, uh, an extraordinary member of our D-128 staff, specifically our Libertyville High School World Language Department, and it is my great honor to, um, introduce to the board, or to reintroduce to the board, uh, somebody who you've met before and have celebrated before, but whose, uh, accomplishments continue to grow. Um, so I'd like to bring up our LHS German teacher, Heidi Lechner. Please come on up, Heidi. This year, um, Heidi really outdid herself because she is not the recipient of one, but two national teaching awards. Um, and I'd like to talk briefly about each. The first award, um, is the LCF Klett Award for Sustainable Development Education in the World Language Classroom. So, like our daring mission is about, um, empowering and inspiring students to make a difference in their world and to create change for the greater good, Heidi embraces her role not just to teach German, but to teach students, um, authentic uses to use their language, and, um, has introduced the concept of sustainability into her curriculum. Um, the Klett Award Group wrote that they are honored to recognize Heidi, um, the German teacher and instructional coach at Libertyville High School for her profound commitment to fostering a culture of sustainability within her German classrooms. As an educator and advocate for sustainable education, Heidi embodies, embodies the qualities that this award seeks to honor. Her commitment to sustainability is evident in her meticulously crafted German curriculum, where she ingeniously incorporates the 17 SDGs across various levels of German. One of her notable accomplishments is her establishment of meaningful connections between her students and German-speaking peers across the world through technology platforms like Flipgrid, Padlet, Boom Along, and Talk Abroad. She facilitates impactful cross-cultural conversations that broaden her students' perspectives and deepen their understanding of global issues. So, that was for the Klett, LCF Klett Award for Sustainable Development. And on top of that, um, Heidi was awarded the American Association of Teachers of German, the AATG Outstanding German Educator Award this year. Um, basically, they said, "She is the best German teacher in the country." So, Heidi possesses, what they wrote was that she possesses a profound knowledge of the subject matter, German language and culture, and her proficiency in German is remarkable, enabling her to effectively communicate with her students and engage them in meaningful learning experiences. Her in-depth understanding of the cultures of the German-speaking world adds an invaluable dimension to her teaching, allowing her to foster cultural understanding and appreciation among her students. Uh, the AATG also wanted to recognize that Heidi has made countless contributions beyond the classroom. Participation in German Education Multiplier Program by the Goethe Institute demonstrates a dedication to sharing knowledge and experiences through her professional writings and her presentations, and her efforts in disseminating valuable educational insights are commendable and greatly benefit the wider educational community. I have personally been in Heidi's classroom, and even though I don't speak a word of German, for some reason, I always understand what is going on. It is a tremendously enjoyable and joyous place to be, and, um, Libertyville High School, District 128, are tremendously fortunate to have an educator of Heidi's caliber, Heidi Lechner.
Hi, thank you, Tom. All right, I just have a few thank yous.
Heidi Lechner.
Thank you to the board and to everyone for inviting me tonight. I am very proud and definitely overwhelmed with having received two national awards this year. Both awards required me to curate a 30-page dossier each of recommendations, curriculum samples, self-reflections, student reflections, and a summary of my personal and professional accomplishments. While compiling these dossiers, I had time to reflect on how District 128 has been a strong supporter of my professional development. I would particularly like to thank the board tonight for their part in making Libertyville High School a supportive place to innovate as a teacher. I would also like to thank Tom, Ray, and Jenny for their personal support in attaining both the Outstanding German Educator Award, which, yes, Tom, is actually the highest award you can get as a German teacher in this country, and the Klett Award for Sustainable Development Education. Lastly, I would like to thank my students. It is due to their willingness to be daring in every way and to trust my teaching that I am able to try out all my various activities and curriculum and dance parties, Tom, that made me win these awards. My LHS German students, they win awards and scholarships every single year, which Mary is kind enough to put in paw, e-paw prints, and I publish a lot, and they continue to with German at the college level, um, especially because they are College of Lake County students due to the dual credit program, so many of them earn a college credits by the time they leave our program. Um, and they continue to major in German, and I'm so proud to be part of a thriving German program here and to see what wonderful adults they become afterwards. Thank you so much, everyone.
Heidi Lechner takes pictures with the board for about the next 30 seconds. Everyone returns to their seats. Lisa Hessel.
I never get tired of recognizing our phenomenal students and staff. Um, so now, uh, we will have an invitation for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board this evening?
Pause for the public.
Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on to our esteemed student school board representative reports. Oh, I'm so sorry. Up next is the teacher union report. Thank you, Carol, I skipped over, um, my apologies. Uh, we welcome the teachers' union representative to give their report at this time, if there is one. Hmm, my error was precipitous, it looks like we do not have one this evening. So, we will move on to our esteemed student school board representative reports. Take it away.
Rakaya Elman Shahi.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to update you on new clubs at LHS. This last Thursday, the New American Sign Language Club had their first meeting ever. Junior Jenna Abdurrahman, founder of the club, said that she was inspired to start it because she knows three languages and wants to be a polyglot, and thought that it would be fun to teach students a different type of language. I saw club members saying, "Hi, my name is in sign language" around the school right after they learned it, which was really cool. Wildcat Historical Association is also one of the new clubs that's getting started. Seniors Caroline Scott and Jenna Bywy, who are also members of the Drops of Ink School Magazine, found many old magazines, yearbooks, and articles from Libertyville that date all the way back to the 1930s. They realized that they were not very organized, so they started the club to assemble a group who is passionate about history, to organize these artifacts and archives and display them around the school to bring attention to them and educate students about the history of our town. I was very lucky to attend one of the meetings and look through the very first yearbook from 1917, which was super cool. South Asian Student Association, founded by co-presidents Junior Prem Acharya and sophomore Roshan Matthew, met for the first time this past month, too. Acharya and Matthew said that they were very inspired to create the South Asian Student Association as they felt that many students at LHS weren't entirely informed about South Asian culture, so they did, wanted to educate LHS about it through activities, celebrations, and food. Members participated in Mendy, which is an art form common in South Asian culture, and played trivia in the first meeting. Astronomy Club, founded by senior Christina Stelter, is intended to bring people who have interests in learning about the universe together. This is a club that will allow people who may not have the ability to participate in space-related activities to participate, which is a fun and also educational opportunity to apply astronomy outside the classroom. Thank you.
Lisa Hessel. Do you happen to know the sponsors, the staff sponsors of those new clubs? It's okay if you don't, I'm just, want to recognize them if you do know who they are.
For Astronomy Club, I think it's Mr. Brian Richeson, he's our physics teacher. And then for Wildcat Historical Association, it's Mr. Kevin O'Neill, but I don't know about the American Sign Language Club and the South Asian Student Association.
Okay. No worries.
The Sign Language Club is being, uh, sponsored by Ms. Stilling.
Okay.
And, um, the South Asian Club, I think, is Mr. Licaros, Paul Licaros.
Perfect. So, we thank those students for their interest in their, um, starting new clubs, as well as for the staff that is sponsoring those new clubs.
Molly Neary.
As we wrap up first semester, we look forward to next semester's winter dance, spring break, and all the end-of-year fun activities. However, between now and then, there's a large gap in the school year that is often hated by students for being the least exciting and most draining time of the year. To combat this post-winter break slump, student council and various wellness groups in our school are designing ways to keep up the student spirit and engagement. Student Council elect board member Alicia Villanueva Guzman explained that student council is moving from their serve, community service season, to their shine season, where they will highlight and give shout-outs to the amazing staff and students that contribute to our LHS community. She hopes that STUCO will keep student attitudes positive, leading up to the Fun Inclusive Spirit Week and Winter Dance that they are planning on at the end of February. Senior Wellness Board Member Evie Gayden shared that they are working on organizing both Wildcat Summit and Snowball, two student-led events that focus on mental and physical health, leadership, and teamwork. As someone who has participated in Wildcat Summit the past two years, it is truly a fun community-building event that I look forward to every January. Students and Principals Advisory Board, who are also part of the Wellness Subcommittee, will continue Wildcat Winter Wellness, as various local wellness organizations host games, hand out treats, and offer challenges outside of our cafeteria on Wednesdays, continuing to prove, provide students with fun breaks during their days. They stay hopeful that they will find a way to continue the famous Hot Cocoa Fridays after the holidays, especially since now it is complete with a toppings bar. Thank you, Dr. K. Thank you, Dr. K. Overall, the efforts made by these groups are promising, as we look forward to all of their projects moving into the next semester of the year.
Molly passes the microphone to Louis. Louis Perry.
Good evening. December has just begun at LHS, and already students are partaking in various activities. This past week, members of the Ecos Club, as well as students in the AP Environmental Science class, helped assist in the waste audit. Sam Powell, a senior and member of the Ecos Club, described the project like this. LHS is working to update the cafeteria in the next few years, and Ecos, an environmental club at LHS, wants to try and see if the cafeteria can be run a little more sustainable than the way it is now. Some ideas from the Ecos Club was to switch to reusable china and silverware, other than the plastics and paper ones used today. The waste audit, which was done this past Thursday and Friday, was done to find out how much and what type of trash is produced from the cafeteria on a daily basis. Sam continued on to say, "Using the data, we are now able to calculate how much we could conserve trash-wise and money-wise if all the plates, paper boats, and silverware that were in the trash at the end of the waste audit were never thrown away and were instead saved, washed, and used another day." The audit was done in the cafeteria, and students were assisted by APES and Ecos members to sort their trash in the correct bin. Then the volunteers calculated how much trash was in each bin at the end of the period. We are still waiting the results from the audit, but we are excited to see what they found. And on another note, at the beginning of this month, students in the Theater Department participated in the annual One Acts Festival. Here, students have the opportunity to write, direct, and act in their own short plays. This year, there were holiday-themed productions, booths of various TV shows, and many other plays. River Thompson, a junior, acted in one of the plays, and he said, "It's a lot of fun. It's where people who don't usually do theater or people who are just trying to branch out can do something low commitment and still have a blast. It's really casual and enjoyable for everyone involved." Thank you.
Maya Raval. The winter sports season at VHS is in full swing, and many of our teams are off to a hot start. This season, we have our very first Vernon Hills High School all-female wrestling team. There are several of our athletes that have finished top 10 in the past two wrestling meets. It has been amazing to see all these wonderful female athletes compete in this new way. Our gymnastics team is also off to a great start with finishing first and second in their first two invites of the season, and our girls' and boys' bowling teams have hit it off, where senior Grace Funk and junior Zach Schumaker are leading in the way for their teams, respectively. This past month, VHS has also had the opportunity to celebrate several female athletes as they sign their national letter of intent to play their sport at the next level. Senior Carly Sides is committed to Northern Michigan University to continue playing soccer, and senior Anna Lester is committed to run cross-country and track at Eastern Kentucky University. And at the end of the month, we have the opportunity to celebrate senior Ava Lucian on her commitment to play soccer at Kent State University. In the realm of celebrations, our very own College Resource Center put together a celebration to celebrate all of the hard work seniors put into completing their college applications. There is a day full of treats and activities for the seniors. A big thank you to Mrs. Bolito, our C advisor, and all of the parents that volunteered their time and donations with food and drinks to make this fun day happen. Another thanks to the parents and the amazing Cougar Parent Connection, who showed their gratitude for the wonderful teachers we have by providing a delicious breakfast for them before school last week. Government Economics Teacher Mr. Voss says, "Us teachers always appreciate all that our students and parents do to show their appreciation, and I surely enjoyed the treats."
Maya passes the microphone to Ruhi. Ruhi Savramanian.
As we enter, as we are in the final weeks of the semester, it is one of the busiest times for our Fine Arts Department. The VHS Orchestra finished their annual Middle School Festival concert on November 28th and 30th. During this time, middle schoolers got to learn about being a musician in high school and the Rite Assembly. VHS student leaders helped make a warm welcome to future Cougars. Additionally, a band concert also recently took place on December 6th. And this coming week, the orchestral and choir department have their popular annual holiday concert on December 13th. In our Theater Department, we are getting ready for the premiere of our freshman sophomore play, Mirror of Most Value: A Miss Marvel Play, which will run December 15th and 16th. Also, VHS has had many successes in our student activities. NSML Number Three, hosted by VHS, was a great accomplishment for our math team, who won first place. Additionally, Absar Bimalarja medaled in our VHS Science Olympiad Palantim. Lastly, as VHS students are hard at work studying for finals, the Academic Resource Center has thought of ways to support Cougars. Each day this week, there will be an ARC study session on a specific subject held before and after school with peer tutors who can help. Today, we had two focused study sessions on world languages and English. We look forward to supporting our fellow Cougars during the end of the year.
Ruhi passes the microphone to Purav. Purav Aurora.
I'd like to start off with QuestBridge, a national nonprofit organization dedicated to connecting high-achieving, low-income students with leading colleges and universities. Decisions for students who applied early action through QuestBridge came out two weeks ago, with a few students being offered full scholarships to some of the most prestigious colleges in the nation. Next up, I'd like to highlight a spectacular win accomplished by a true visionary, Mr. Lucan. Through his leadership, the VHS Computer Science Club has been named a state finalist in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow National Competition. This means they've won $2,500 in Samsung products and have progressed to the national stage, where they could potentially win a grand prize of $100,000. It's a proud moment, as this is the second consecutive year that VHS has received this honorable recognition. Now, I'd like to share some thoughts about the growing number of school surveys. While we've been conducting them for years, there's a growing concern that the results might not be providing an accurate picture. Students, often tired and overwhelmed with schoolwork, are finishing surveys in record time, sometimes in mere minutes. This rush-through mentality raises questions about the accuracy and validity of the responses. Clicking the same answer for every question just to be done doesn't offer much insight into their true experiences and opinions. Although there are students who thoughtfully answer every question, their answers might be neutralized by a false survey. More and more students are feeling that it may be beneficial to utilize a new approach in gathering meaningful student feedback.
Lisa Hessel.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for our Student School Board reps? Okay, nice job. Thank you very much. Moving on to FOIA requests.
There was one FOIA request, and it was fulfilled in a timely manner.
Great. Move right along to good news.
Wonderful. We have lots of good news. First of all, we have students being recognized at each campus. The following Libertyville High School students were named December True Wildcats. Mary Weatherly, Hope Finch, Ava Vestal, Imoze Asmuwan, Savannah Banasali, Shub Varshni, Krista Apigo, Lou Matilenko, and Zach Porcellius. And at Vernon Hills, these students were named December Cougar Class Act Award recipients. Olivia Graham, Nia Dias, Sahidi Guramela, Rain Weiner, Samantha Nemoda, Abigail Nowacki, Natalia Robles, Zoe Metta, Visti Dotar, Ashini Kokar, Christopher Elliott, Porter Lorenz, Alexander Litman, Donovan Rivas Castillo, and Alexander Aguana Martinez. I also had the Computer Science, so great minds think alike, to congratulate the Computer Science students, and we will definitely recognize them in person in January or February. We also have Adam Gore in the audience today, and he and the marching Wildcats are going to be traveling to Rome over winter break to perform in the New Year's Day Parade. LHS has one of 11 bands from the United States to be invited to perform in the parade. There is an anticipated crowd of 100,000 people at the parade, which traverses the streets of Rome, Spanish Steps, and ends at the Piazza de Pablo.
Congratulations. If there is a way for us to livestream that, will you let us know?
Thank you for making that possible. Next up, we have D128 Special Olympics athlete John Keating. Competed in the Illinois Special Olympics State Bowling Championship. He finished second in the second-highest division, placing him among the top four bowlers in the state. Five D128 Special Olympians competed at the Area Basketball Skills Tournament at Graveslake High School, earning three golds, a silver, and a bronze. Gold medal winners advancing to the state competition in March are Rishi Arun, Hannah Creach, and Joel Smith. And finally, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, or as we all know it, FGFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Finance Reporting to D128 for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2022. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivational potential users and user groups to read the report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations to Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Daniel Stanley, and his team for earning this award. And that is the rest, that is the complete good news for this month.
Fantastic. Congratulations, Dan, to you and your team. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, again, we have discussed these at least once extensively in committee, if not more than that. We are looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Pause for roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Kokarni.
Aye.
Lisa Hessel.
Motion passes. We will move on to items for action, and I will turn it over to Chairperson Carmichael for item number eight that came out of PNP.
Don Carmichael.
Okay, so this is the...
Momentary pause.
Presentation that was given to us earlier by Ben Rodriguez. Ben, you want to fill us in a little bit?
Benjamin Rodriguez.
Yes, excuse me. The proposal is for Schoolings, a college and career readiness platform that will support, facilitate, and scale all efforts for career exploration, post-secondary planning, financial aid and literacy, internships, work-based learning, as well as data and reports. It'll also be the venue for individualized planning for students to have an academic post-high school and career plan all in one system and process.
Don Carmichael.
And as discussed in committee, Schoolings will be taking over for Naviance at LHS and replacing Score at Vernon Hills. And we've had experience here.
Yeah, both Parab and Louis have both shared some positive experience with Schoolings, that they were kind enough to mention in our last board rep reports.
Which, to be honest, is factoring into my vote this evening, just letting you know.
Yeah, I mean, having firsthand experience among our students is definitely worth noting, and we appreciate that input.
And also, having been introduced to the process from the main district and their superintendent.
Don Carmichael.
Who, as you said, were 10 years ahead of us, I have to tell you, I felt comforted by the presentation that we saw in committee, because it was a huge job, and it's very clear that you are taking this job to task. So I'm glad that we can, well, I hope I'm glad that we can provide you with this tool, but we'll see how that goes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of Schoolings Platform Implementation and Training for a one-time fee of $16,000 plus a first-year subscription fee, $40,625 for a total amount of $56,625.
Drumkey, so moved.
Kokarni, second.
Is there any other discussion?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Very good. Roll call, Carol.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Kokarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. See? Two microphones is a charm.
And we will turn it over to Chairperson Batson for items B and C.
Thank you. First up is the Budget Prep Resolution. So this is an annual resolution to allow our esteemed Chief Business Official to begin the preparation for the fiscal year 2025 budget, correct? Yeah. That seems like a long way away, but it's here. So we discussed this earlier in committee. So can we have a motion to authorize Mr. Stanley to prepare our budget?
Hessel, motion to approve the resolution to designate Assistant Superintendent for Finance, CSBO, to prepare tentative budget for the 2025 fiscal year of Community High School District Number 128, Lake County. Joy.
Carmichael, second.
Easy for you to say. Any questions, comments? If I ever get my voice back, I'll be able to do that. Okay, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Kokarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Second item here is the LHS Graduation, the contract for the NOW Arena for the graduation ceremonies in 2025 and 2026. This was reviewed in committee earlier this evening. Can we have a motion, please?
Carmichael, motion to approve the license agreement with the NOW Arena for 2025 and 2026 LHS graduations for a total amount of $92,621.
Benjamin, second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Kokarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes the F and A agenda.
Great. So for discussion, we have one item. We have the first reading of board policies.
Pause for discussion.
We're going to stay here all night and read them. All 325 pages.
We're going to read everyone.
You guys good? Everybody good?
Again, as stated in PNP, we went through a lengthy process of updating all of our board policies to go from a current system of using IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards Press, to Illinois Association of School Boards Press Plus. So it's a different system, which will allow us to update our policies in a much timelier manner and also make it easier for us in the backend. But in doing so, it allowed us to also review all of our board policies to ensure that they are updated with the current language as required by the board. So it was a lengthy process, and again, would like to thank Don Carmichael, board member, and Carol Skodin for their work with Tammy Eng from IASB. So this is our first reading tonight. We did our first reading at PNP a few hours ago, and first reading at a board meeting, and then we'll do second reading in January at the PNP, second reading at January to enact our new board policy manual.
Lisa Hessel.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion?
Pause for discussion.
Seeing as we did just discuss it, we will move on to items for information. Dr. Herman, your superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, everyone. It is that time of year, students gave their report about end-of-semester finals and things like that. It is the time of year where us educators also do our mid-year review. And so I wanted to remind the board that the administrators and myself will be working to gather evidence of our work towards our annual goals. So if we can go to the next slide. The superintendent's goals are aligned with our district mission, our daring mission. They're also grounded in our foundational strategies of collaboration, continuous improvement, as well as making sure that the boundaries of making sure we have money set aside to support them, that we have professional development to accompany all of our initiatives. All of those things sort of cradle the goals that I have each year. Next slide. This year, we identified nine goals, and they fit under three broad categories. The first three are under the umbrella of culture and climate. The next three are directly aligned with our three strategic goal areas. And then we have three additional innovations that were started previous to our strategic plan that we're continuing to move forward on. Next slide. So one of the things that I wanted to remind the board is, I think, actually earlier, Sinal, you talked about, you know, when we see these gaps in achievement, or when we see some of these things, are there actions tied to some of these initiatives? And I always want to bring us back to, yes, you are holding me accountable to these goals, and many of them have measurable and tangible progress that you're intending for me to show you evidence of. I'm not doing all the work myself. Many of these things are being implemented by, as Ben demonstrated tonight, committees, teachers, administrative leaders are working collaboratively to make a lot of this work um, strengthening positive relationships with D-128 staff. That is not one of the three goal areas, but it is explicitly linked to our uh, strategic plan, um, foundational strategy of collaboration. And we set a target that each DLT person will implement and monitor a plan to strengthen relationships and grow collaboration between themselves and staff. And that's our connections and collaboration plan. And so each of us have been keeping track. I have been assigned to both uh, physical welfare departments and a security department. And I'm about halfway through having one-on-one meetings. The other administrators um, in, in, at the end of December will give me evidence of their progress towards their similar goal. Um, I will be then, again, just sharing with the board in early January, what I've learned from my team, what I've done in addition to that, and giving you that evidence moving forward. Um, the next goal is for partnering with our union. So uh, we are working uh, effectively right now to author our first union contract with our support staff. We also have been meeting regularly, um, I with the union president once a week. And then we also monthly have been meeting with uh, the Labor Management Committee to continue to build um, ongoing communication and uh, understanding of some really key issues that we're facing. Um, I'm not going to go over all of them now because we are in the process of gathering information for each one of these. Um, if you can go to the, a couple more slides for me, please, Bo. Um, next one. Oh, actually, if you could go back to that one. One of the things that, so for example, tonight, where we were discussing the um, decrease that we saw in our rating on the Equity Continuum. And one of the areas was um, in the area of students in advanced coursework. One of the things that we identified last year, knowing that we knew this gap existed, was the idea of partnering with equal opportunity schools to help us identify students from underrepresented groups who we might not be identifying through our traditional means to help us say, hey, you have the skills and the prior knowledge to be successful in an honors class or in an AP class or in a dual credit class or in a capstone class. Um, so some of the things that are in our action plan, I mean, some of the data is not a surprise, what was in our report card. We have known the patterns of that data. And our action plan is directly aligned to improvements in those areas. So some of the things that people on my team will be doing is gathering evidence of the work that they maybe have been done doing in committees. I will, you know, uh, coalesce all of that and then put it in a form that's meaningful for the board to, to receive evidence of. Um, so some of the things that you might be having questions about, how is this particular initiative moving, moving forward? Um, I will have a summary of each of these areas for the board in early January. Next slide. Um, again, that also includes our grading and assessment, a team that they started 18 months ago. Um, we decided to do a pilot this year to not do full implementation this year. So we're supporting the pilot team and we're gearing up to do additional uh, professional learning with staff during second semester to make sure they feel equipped to implement uh, our new grading practices next fall. Um, and then the, you can keep going to the next one. The next timeline um, is again here just to let you know overall, the mid-year self-assessment, DLT and their self-assessment of their progress towards goals is due to me the day before winter break. I then will review that over winter break and add in my specific action steps. Then I will submit that to the board by January 12th. The board will then have some time to look that over and then in closed session on um, uh, the 16th, will have an opportunity for me to again, answer any questions the board has, for you to give me feedback about what's working or if there's any um, uh, adjustments that you'd like me to make moving forward on the plan. End of the year, we'll do a similar process where DLT will do their self-evaluation by the beginning of May. I then will use that to inform my self-evaluation. Um, you will have that by May 15th. That will then give you an opportunity to do the individual scoring that you all do and giving me both where you see me on the rubric as well as opportunities for comments. And then we'll have our final evaluation meeting in closed session on June 24th. Um, so just how the students are doing their mid-year uh, midterms and things like that, so are the adults. Um, and I look forward to giving all of you the tangible evidence in a written format. Um, but I also just wanted to connect the dots between some of the things that we've been talking about along the way, reminding you how connected they are to our action plan and that I'll have tangible uh, progress reports for each of the goal areas for you shortly.
Momentary pause.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. And that reminds me, we do need to set up uh, middle-ish and uh, super evil.
Lisa Hessel.
Um, moving on, uh, board comments and events.
Pause for next topic.
Anybody want to share any learning or events they've attended?
Jim Batson.
I'll share mine and it's also part of my, the IASB.
Perfect.
Uh, comments. Uh, first of all, uh, late November, uh, a few of us attended the uh, uh, annual joint conference. It's a conference uh, supported by the Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Association of School Administrators and Association of School Business Officials.
Momentary pause.
Um, there are many sessions there, some great keynotes, um, uh, lots of learning to be had. Uh, but I also uh, represented uh, D-128 in the Delegate Assembly where the annual meeting of the Illinois Association of School Boards is held and convened as well as uh, looking at um, uh, resolutions for um, priorities for the association for the upcoming year. So was able to represent us on that. It was a, it was a nice conference. I think this is, it's back in stride. It's been sort of a, a bit disjointed, especially during the, the uh, the years just uh, following the uh, the pandemic. So uh, also um, again, thank you to District 128 um, uh, for hosting the Legislative Breakfast early in December. It's a uh, supported by uh, the Lakes Division of the Illinois Association of School Boards, which I sit on the uh, the committee for. Uh, and uh, we've, this is now the second time we've hosted this in early December. It's a great opportunity for our local legislators to get to know uh, area uh, board members, administrators. Uh, it's just a, a nice way to, to connect and ask questions and, and uh, build those relationships, which are so important. So again, thank you and thank Carol for her assistance in uh, in coordinating that. Um, and we had a really good turnout, turnout. So who knows, we may, they may ask us to do that again. So uh,
I think Carol is ready to pass the baton to another district for a year or two. She is an amazing event planner, but I think, I think.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. Yeah, I was kind of surprised we did it two years in a row, but um, happy that uh, people got to visit both of our schools. So there's a lot of people that was surprised. Uh, so the division is mostly Lake County, um, is, is all of Lake County, I, I believe. And there were some administrators and board members that come in and said, I had no idea where Vernon Hills High School was and this is so beautiful. And I'm, I'm, they, they had no idea we were snuck back here in this little uh, industrial complex, but uh, uh, lots of good feedback from that. And I'm expecting to hear the survey results here soon. So that's what I got. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Yes. And I was able to attend that event with uh, Cara and uh, we enjoyed it. There were five legislators, local legislators there. And getting to hear from them really was uh, very helpful.
Don Carmichael.
I also went to the uh, annual conference and uh, did two sessions on Friday. Um, the first one, uh, Equity and Educational Imperative. Um, so that was uh, I guess my, my most recent, most modern training in equity. Um, so uh, I thought this session was beneficial. Um, the presenters were great. Um, the afternoon session I did was on unconscious bias. Um, and I found that another fascinating um, session. So I uh, I appreciate the IASB, IASB for making those sessions available. Um, and then the next day went to a bunch of sessions, uh, talked to vendors. So it's, I uh, I'm energized by going to that conference. Uh, I missed having some of the, the uh, collegial banter that occurs at those conferences, but Jim and I did take advantage of uh, seeing each other uh, one-on-one. Um, so it was a good conference.
And I'm hoping, uh, I was sorry to have to miss it this year.
You were busy though.
Well, I definitely look forward to attending next year and hopefully uh, more of our board colleagues will be able to make the 2024 November triple I.
Lisa Hessel.
Um, moving right along to the CEDAL report. Um, I had the great good fortune of attending in our usual delegates' place. Um, it was the first time I've been to a CEDAL meeting. So that was very, um, it was a great learning opportunity for me.
Thank you for having me in my place. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Um, at the next CEDAL meeting in January, you're going to learn of the uh, recruiting process that's going to take place um, after the announcement of the uh, retirement of the CEDAL Superintendent Val Donan.
Yes.
So that I think is the most notable news that came out of that CEDAL meeting.
Yep. And I will keep everyone apprised of that. I also just uh, wanted to thank Denise for joining the CEDAL Steering Committee um, with a number of other area superintendents. Uh, I think her experience will be invaluable in kind of the, the direction that the co-op is moving. So thank you so much, Denise.
Thank you for doing that. I know that they're looking to make some systemic improvements and as a veteran systems thinker, they will benefit and our special ed students who we send to CEDAL will benefit from their experience. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Momentary pause.
Okay, um, we are now at uh, item seven, future agenda items. We have several that are listed. Is there anything uh, additional that members would like to add?
Cara Drumkey.
I've been um, referencing our district change map and I know we're planning on moving it to the dashboard. That's not live yet. The dashboard, because I've been looking for it.
Dr. Denise Herman.
The dashboard that we previewed, I don't, you know, I'm gonna marry as our expert on that. I'm not quite.
We, we have been working through some accessibility issues with it, but we've ironed those out and it was actually posted this morning.
Oh, you're kidding.
So very timely question. Um, if you go to the strategic plan page, it's under um, there's a little thermometer icon.
Progress?
Uh, and it's called progress. Thank you. Um, and you'll find it there.
Lisa Hessel.
Okay. In addition, at the January FNF meeting, we will be discussing radon testing for all of our buildings. Um, any other future agenda items members wish to suggest? Okay, um, then with nothing further, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Batson, so moved.
Carmichael, second.
Uh, we do a voice vote? Voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
And we will send a calendar invite to remind all the board members about the special meeting next Monday.
Fade to District 128 logo. Fade to black. End of meeting.